Madam President, are you ready for me to call roll?
Yes.
Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Shade Baschukun. Erin Johnson.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
It is 6:18 and with the quorum of the board present, I now call this meeting to order. We will start with our agenda at the top with our opening ceremony pledge of allegiance. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce who will be leading us in our pledge this evening. Cadet Airman Abigail Bosnak is the daughter of Evelyn and Damon Bosnak. Abigail is a freshman at Leander High School and serves as a logistic NCOIC for the AFJROTC. Abigail is an avid participant in the Leander Police Department Safety Cadets, and she is active in her church. After graduation, Abigail inspires to join the U.S. Air Force Security Forces. We are so glad that you're joining us this evening. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and proceed to the next part of our agenda this evening. We have a spotlight on learning from Canyon Ridge Middle School.
A pair of Leander ISD students wrestle their way to a state championship. With swimming success, one student athlete kicks it to the top.
Just a second, we'll go ahead and rewind that. Okay. That's the next recognition.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having us. I am Wendy Starbent, the proud principal at Canyon Ridge Middle School, and we're so excited to be here. We are really looking forward to highlighting the learning and the connections happening at Canyon Ridge. When we first started talking about what did we want to really spotlight tonight, it was hard to narrow it down. We have a lot of outstanding students and outstanding educators, but tonight we're going to focus on our fabulous robotics team and National History Day competitors and some science fair competitors. So we have some great opportunities for you to hear from our students. In fact, our science fair students who are sitting here are going on to state tomorrow, so I want to wish them good luck. And our robotics team just returned from a, I think it was an area competition and for Central Texas where they were competing against high school teams. So they are really, we brought some really stellar students here tonight. Our theme this year was better together, and we are just so proud how our students and our staff have really come together and soared to success. And so even though we can't highlight everything, we're really looking forward to these students having the opportunity to share their experiences. In fact, some of their teams couldn't be here tonight because as we speak, we're hosting a track meet, so some of them are running track and some of them are rehearsing for band and choir UIL competitions that are coming up in the next couple of days. So these aren't complete teams, but we are really excited to have the students who could be here tonight. And so I think what you're going to really hear from them is their critical thinking and their collaboration and their problem solving and how connected they are to their passions at Canyon Ridge. And so I'm really excited to hear from them, and I'm going to turn it off to them so they can show off all the great things they've been doing this year.
Hello. Oh, hello. My name is Rona Thready. I'm in seventh grade and I'm on the robotics team. I'm also involved in athletics and band. And so I'm very passionate about helping people, and a way that I express that is with robotics, we did community outreach by helping Steina Ranch and STEAM Night and going there and teaching kids. And it was just a lot of fun to see their joy as we taught them new things.
Hi, I'm Trisha and I'm in seventh grade. This year I was involved with a lot of things like band, library club, and FTC, which is what I really want to talk about tonight. In FTC, we learned a lot on how to build robots, how to program them, how to develop websites, and how to connect with our community. We connected through our community through outreach, which is what Rona talked about a little bit. We went to STEAM Night, and then we also went to our elementary school, Laura Bush. They're struggling a little bit because of COVID, and they used to have about 50, 60 kids in their program, and now they have about 20 and like maybe two girls in all. So yeah, that was a big deal. Yeah, we were like talking a lot about that and trying to make a difference about it. And also, we, like he said, we went to Steina Ranch, and recently our team competed, as Mr. Devant said, at a big competition in San Antonio against a bunch of high school teams. And I think we were the only middle school team there. So even though we didn't move on, I'm very proud of us.
Hello, my name is Arnav Kumar. I'm in the eighth grade, and this year I'm involved in NJHS Robotics and Band. I, so I want to talk about our robotics program this year. So this year we had a lot of fun learning about how to build robots, how to code our robots. It's something that we really didn't have last year, and we liked gaining experience and interacting with other students who we normally wouldn't interact with because most of us are in different grades. And it was really fun just to collaborate with others and learn how, collaborate with others and learn about the STEM field.
My name is Daniel Kim, and I'm in eighth grade. This year at CRMS, I'm involved in NJHS Band and Robotics. I am proud of the successes of our robotics team because this year we moved on to the regionals. And we had a lot of fun working with each other as a team, and we learned many skills in the STEM field.
Hi, my name is Sanvi and I'm in eighth grade. This year I'm involved in robotics, National History Day, Student Council, Athletics, NJHS, and Math Counts. I am proud of the success of the Student Council this year because we had a great achievement planning events such as the Glow Party and Volley Brawl. We had a great turnout and noticed that the kids enjoyed these events and had a great time. As well as this, I've really enjoyed getting connected with robotics this year because of problem solving and creative thinking.
Hi, my name is Shreya Paladia, and I'm in eighth grade. This year I was involved in FTC Robotics, Destination Imagination, National History Day, NJHS as President, PTA Reflections, and Eagle News. I'm excited to share my project at the Texas State History Day in April about diplomacy and debate in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And I'm proud to have accomplished first place in the individual exhibit category at the Regional History Day. Along with these accomplishments, I truly enjoyed and am very passionate about doing a virtual art show to raise money for CRMS teachers. I donated 100% of the proceeds to CRMS teachers. I'm so thankful and blessed to have wonderful teachers at CRMS. Thank you to all of my teachers and all of you here at Leander ISD.
Hello, my name is Shay Worth, and I'm a seventh grader at Canyon Ridge Middle School. As Mr. Devant previously mentioned, this year I have participated in the Texas State Engineering and Science Fair, and I'm forever grateful that CRMS led me to this opportunity. I've been able to work alongside student peers, and the CRMS faculty has been forever helpful to us within this, within the process. Within my time at CRMS, as a sixth grader and a seventh grader, I've established a positive reputation in CRMS Band, soccer, Student Council, and more. I hope that I can continue forging my own path as a leader at CRMS in the, in the following year.
Hi, my name is Adia and I'm in seventh grade. I'm involved in Science Fair, Math Counts, Athletics, and Choir. I really love CRMS because we get to do a lot of hands-on projects and we get to do a lot of team activities. But I truly loved Science Fair because I got to work alongside all of these people, and our teachers supported us a lot, and I was really grateful for the opportunity.
Hi, my name's Aria and I'm a seventh grade student in CRMS. Some things that I'm involved in are Science Fair, Varsity Choir, and the Eagle Ambassadors Club. Some of my favorite classes at CRMS are definitely Gateway and Choir because in Gateway, we do a lot of fun projects with teams, and it helps with their communication skills because you do a lot of presentations in front of the class. And I love Choir because you can make a lot of new friends and there are a lot of fun opportunities. And for Science Fair, I also really liked working with everyone, and it was a really good experience.
My name is Orja Kumar and I'm in seventh grade at Canyon Ridge Middle School. Some things that I've participated in this year are the library club, the yearbook committee, the varsity troubled choir, and I placed in the top three in the school in regional science fairs. What I love about Canyon Ridge's many amazing programs is that they get me to step outside of my comfort zone and do something that I'm proud of.
Dr. Gearing, Madam President, and the rest of the board, just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. As you can see from our amazing students, the accomplishments that they have been able to achieve are beyond outstanding. But I also wanted to take the opportunity to give a shout out as they did to the teachers at Canyon Ridge. The teachers this year, just like the rest of our teachers in Leander ISD, were clawing our way out of the pandemic. But to be able to sit in PLCs on Tuesday after our professional day on Monday and hear from teachers who said, "We just like being back together, and we just like to be with the people that we work with." And that shout out actually should go to our brave and fearless leader who's opposite me. And I need to say this because she didn't know that I was going to say this, but compassionate leadership comes from the top. And she's getting her speaking points from those of you who are here. So thank you for the message that you are giving. Thank you for the trickle-down effect, and thank you for supporting Leander ISD.
Can we go ahead and do one more round of applause for our students? Thank you. Thank you so much Canyon Ridge School. That was awesome. And now for more awesomeness, we will now play our video if we're ready. Are we good? They're looking at me like, "Are you, do you really mean it this time?" Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
A pair of Leander ISD students wrestle their way to a state championship. With swimming success, one student athlete kicks it to the top. The Lady Timberwolves make it two in a row, plus school-community relations crystallize their status among the state's finest. With pride and excitement, Leander ISD is celebrating success at the highest levels of competition. At the 5A State Wrestling Championships, we can now call two LISD wrestlers state champions. Glen High School's Bryce McLaren claimed the title in the 5A 170-pound division, and senior from Vista Ridge High School, Shaylee Davis, in the 6A 138-pound division. Cedar Park High School had a fantastic finish in UIL State Swimming and Diving, breaking a state record. Thomas Wu became this year's state champ in the 5A 100-meter breaststroke. With third-place finishes, we have Pierce Brook in the 1-meter diving, Ella Monganel in 100-meter freestyle, and Michaela Colts in the 200-meter individual medley. Creating a legacy of winning, the Cedar Park Lady Timberwolves hashtag ran it back for back-to-back state championships in Class 5A Basketball. In dramatic fashion, the Lady Two Wolves grabbed the W and held on tight for a 45-40 double-overtime win over Frisco Memorial. They finished the season undefeated, adding to a 62-game winning streak. The celebration continues with co-MVP Jessella Mall honored as the Texas Gatorade Player of the Year, a first for CPHS and LISD. The junior guard's talent in academics as well as athletics earned her the distinction. Leander ISD's School Community Relations Department earned 11 STAR awards at the Texas School Public Relations Association banquet. With eight gold awards that recognize exceptional craft and creativity, the department earned Best in Category for the District Website. SCR also earned high praise for its super school visits, honored as a finalist for a crystal commendation. Talent and dedication on full display here in hashtag 1LISD. Congratulations to these incredible students and staff and their families as well as our outstanding coaches and support staff.
Well, we'll move on to our superintendent remarks, but that was pretty amazing, Kate.
Pretty amazing. Nothing at this time, I never heard of that.
Okay. All right, board members. Adding to all of those wins and right after our robotics kids come, and you know, that's really exciting. They're all doing F-FTC, which is part of FIRST Robotics. And there's multiple stages of FIRST Robotics that start with a really young age in FLL Junior, and then FLL, and then moves to FTC, and at the very top level, it's FRC. And during spring break, Vandergriff High School hosted an FRC tournament with over 40 teams from all over Texas. And winning the entire tournament, Vandergriff and Cedar Park were on the winning alliance. And these robots are huge, beautiful machines. I mean, you're talking like 100 to 200-pound robot machines that are just complete incredible feats. And it's all of those pieces that started a really young age of not only programming, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, it's also like the marketing of your team and the community outreach of your team. And so there's just so many components of it that it's not just, you know, the engineering pieces, but a lot of those, those other skills. So it was really amazing to see all these amazing teams and then to see the winning alliance had two LISD teams. It was really unique and really special.
I've been busy this week, surprise. On Tuesday, I got to attend Danielson's First Marketplace. For those who are not aware, Danielson, correct me if I'm wrong, they are a mix, Inc., through the Incubator Club, school campus, and they held their first-ever marketplace. And everyone knows I lose water bottles, so these students, if y'all watch our Campus Connection video, I got to see them make this, and I bought it. And I bought this amazing necklace, but it was really awesome because it was all student-led. To be able to go into the classroom and see Ms. Worley teach these students how to use a sewing machine and to see them to apply those real-life skills into a product that they made up and to be able to sell it, and most of them did, sold out. It had some pretty powerful stuff, given the year that we've had. And today, oh wait, what's today? No, Wednesday. I did campus connection visits, and I'll just hit on one. I went with Shade and Trish. Our first stop was at Tarvin Elementary. And what was cool about Tarvin is, I don't know if y'all know, but they have an innovative lab. Their innovative lab is truly like the biggest maker space I've ever seen. But what I love about it is that students are learning real-life skills in this classroom, but they're having fun about it. So when we were in there, they were creating a shoe that could fly. Very interesting. And today, I got to attend my very first Bluebonnet Book Extravaganza. Never been to one of these. And I thought I was just going to Tarvin Elementary's, but little did I know there was other campuses there. Eighty-five students from around Leander ISD, third, fourth, and fifth graders from Rutledge Elementary, Mason Elementary, Steina Ranch, Larkspur, Winkley, and Tarvin all competed via Zoom battling books. And it was so amazing to see these students get excited about reading. They were so excited to know the answers, and they had to read a certain amount of books. I believe Tarvin, I know different schools did different things, but I know most of them did reach the 20 bookmark. And it was just so amazing to see these students get excited, like really. Y'all know how I am when it comes to games. They were very competitive, but so supportive. And just to know that at the elementary level that they're having so much fun reading, it just, it made my day. So shout out to those librarians and those campus administrators for making reading fun for those students.
I'll just do a quick one. Shout out to Vista Ridge and Rousher are both competing in Texas State Color Guard Competition this weekend down in College Station. So that's a first for Vista. I'm not sure about Rousher, but I know it's a first for Vista, so go guard.
All right, board members, are there any updates for committees that you wanted?
The LEAF, LEAF Board met today, and I'm encouraging everyone to join their Classroom Impact Team. For $2 per month, you can make a student, make a difference in LISD student's life. Go to their website, you can get some cool glasses, you can get a cool jacket. Most importantly, though, you're helping your Leander ISD community more than ever. LEAF is an amazing education foundation, so please go to their website and learn how you can make an impact monthly.
All right, board members. If you were interested in the Governance Core book study, please let Lou know, and we'll circle back on that. At one point, we had said, the remarks that we sent back, the standard information from Let's Talk Governance emails, we had some, we wanted to review it. If you have any comments or suggestions, please let Shannon know. That's going to be the last time I ask here unless another request comes to open that back up and look at it again. In the next few weeks, look for a link with more details on how we're going to share our information. SharePoint is going to be an obsolete platform, so our documents will no longer be on SharePoint. And so we're moving over platforms, and so be looking for more information on that. And we may end up needing to have like some individual time with trustees to help us get used to the new platform. LEAF MOU will be coming before the board soon. If you're interested in being a sounding board providing insight...
If you're interested in being a sounding board, providing insight before it comes to the whole body, we can do two, no more than three members can be in that. Please reach out to Bruce and Mitchie if you are interested. The Board Operating Committee, we had talked about it before, would be doing a review. We've escalated our reviews. Board Ops will be on an upcoming agenda with a focus on citizen comments. The CTSBA held robust discussions last night. It was fabulous. Thank you, board members, who are able to attend. We had a focus of discussion on workforce. And we talked about workforce like for our students when they graduate, but we also talked about workforce like right now, our teachers, retention, recruitment, how are we going to pay? How do we get more funding for our workforce? And we had trustees, district administrations, and chambers and our business leaders all partnering together. So those conversations were really rich. It is the first of what I hope will be many conversations, so we'll be continuing those. I was struck by someone who was discussing soft skills or essential skills, and they talked about building trust as a vital soft skill for community and job employment. And then also, one of our skill professionals said, "Kids need to stay off social media." He was, he was saying it though in response to, "Do students realize what they're posting may end up impacting their future job options in the future?" So a lot of good workforce discussions there. Visits on campus, I would just say that's always a bucket filler. Tarvin's done a phenomenal job of building culture. We saw some of that. If you, anybody got a chance to take, partake in the summer Continuous Improvement Conference, Tarvin was there and we saw all that work kind of come to life in the building. It was amazing to see that and kind of the energy that was on campus, as well as we got to see Makerspace. Kids talk about deeper learning and their wonderings. New Hope Elementary, we saw teachers who wanted to reach out and, well, teachers would go reach out if you didn't come to class, and so that was cool. Like there is a connection there. And it was just, over and over again, what we saw were life changers on our communities, reaching students, helping them get their credits, get their graduation, move on to the next step. And so that was so exciting to be a part of all that. So, thank y'all. Okay. All right. If there's no other remarks, we'll move on to citizen comments. "Please note that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. This agenda item is time set aside for us during this meeting to hear from our community. We are restricted in the ways we can interact with you during this portion of the meeting per our Board Operating Procedures and Policy BED Local, which states the Board shall not deliberate or make decisions regarding any subject that's not on the posted agenda. Therefore, please note this format is not going to be a conversation. It's not a back-and-forth discussion. We ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about individuals by name who'd not be able to respond. Our Board Operating Procedures enumerate further requests, but I'll sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. Officers have also confirmed with our counsel, legal counsel, that we will remind you of our request for polite and professional conduct if it becomes necessary that you need a reminder during your citizen comments. We ask that the audience and those participating help us maintain the decorum of this meeting, and as such, there should be no outburst or verbal demonstrations during citizen comments. Each speaker has up to one and a half minutes. It is my intention that we respect and honor each speaker's time. After I call the first speaker, please remember to press the button to speak." Already ready, thank you. And when you hear the chime, know that your one and a half minutes are up. Know that that's, mic will conclude or cut off shortly after. So, all right. Without further ado, speaker number one.
Good evening. I am here because we are all in LISD. Leander School started with a little log building in 1855, which had one room and one teacher. In the eighties, an $8 million bond was passed to create Leander High School, which housed 1,200 students. Today, we have over 41,000 students in 45 diverse schools. The district employs over 5,300 professionals who better the lives of our children every day. Our kids participate in a wide array of academic and athletic activities, creating well-rounded individuals. Leander ISD nourishes future leaders and lifelong relationships that create strong communities. Students, families, and teachers join to cultivate the next generation of incredible Americans. As a group of parents, educators, and students, we believe public education is central to our community. Leander ISD provides an amazing educational experience and contributes to the economic development for the greater Leander area. Our children should continue to have a school district that gives them the freedom to learn and pursue their dreams. Our students deserve an accurate and honest education, no matter their background. Working together, the possibilities are endless. Uniting for students, families, and teachers, we are all in LISD."
All right, thank you. Speaker number two.
Through grassroots efforts, we are involving community members in the political process by promoting candidates, actions, and policies that support Leander ISD. By speaking up and voting fully to fund our schools, we can ensure that all children have a quality education that they deserve. This November, there are some key issues that are be facing our district. We want to properly fund our district to meet the growing needs of our community and allow students to go to their neighborhood schools. Support our staff to have the pay, benefits, and quality of life that will make our district competitive in this challenging economy. And we want to restore local control to our district so educators can focus on meeting the needs of their students. Our opponents have actively divided and distracted us to deny the resources our schools and families need. They have blocked funding to our classrooms, and they are working to control the political narrative that is surrounding our schools. LISD professionals have continued to work in some of the most trying times to deliver this quality education. Our future is brighter when we strengthen and protect an education for all children in Leander ISD, to include our most gifted and our most vulnerable. We can continue to be amazing district while embracing our growth. Please support the education initiatives and the leaders that serve all in Leander ISD.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
I tried to walk as fast as possible. Hi, everyone. My name's Oase. I'm here on behalf of a concerned group of residents in Treviso. I wanted to, Dr. Gearing, thank you so much for letting me have the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you, all of you, for all that you do for the children in LISD. I know this is not a job that pays well, and it's often thankless, and you guys have a ton of tenacity and perseverance, so thank you for what you do for our kids. I'm here today to just thank those few of the trustees that came out to a resident-led open house or information session in Treviso. Thank you so much. It was actually quite informative. The community was really appreciative that, those of you that came out. And I can tell you, we're quite, we're quite energized. We're very excited about really being advocates for a new bond. And that's why I'm here again, is to ask and encourage you to call for another bond in November. We're quite keen on trying to get a school, a school built, not just in Treviso, but funding for all of LISD. There's quite a need on the Western side. There's just a tremendous growth and honestly, a lot of education that needs to be done. Many of my neighbors are new to LISD, new to Texas, sometimes new to the country. And I can tell you that just having the forum to have their questions answered and just be educated about the process was incredibly appreciated. So thank you again, and please do consider calling for a bond sooner rather than later. And if we can find funding to potentially fast-track the design of a Treviso elementary school, if it needs to be larger or a hybrid component, that's elementary and middle school, we're totally up for that. Thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you. Speaker number four.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Turner, and I would like to take some time to share my experience in the district. When my older son started elementary school, we had some pretty big obstacles to navigate. My son had an awful time concentrating, completing work, and participating in class appropriately. At no time did his teachers give up on him. They partnered with me and poured their hearts and souls into my boy. Next year, he will be in middle school, and I am so proud of the young man he is becoming. When my next son came through, new obstacles were presented. This son would not even enter the school when I would drop him off in the morning. His saint of a kindergarten teacher never gave up on him. She was in constant communication with me, and when school shut down for COVID, she came by her house to check on my son. Thanks to the support of the school staff, he has absolutely become a different kid and an awesome reader. I want to say a huge thank you to all of their teachers for helping mold and create excited learners. I have been privileged to be a teacher with Leander ISD for 14 years. I absolutely love my job. My coworkers in administration have always been amazing. I am blessed to teach children, and I am excited to be at my school every day. I want the community to know that we work tirelessly for your students, and I can't speak for everyone, but I will continue to work tirelessly until I retire. I want the community to know as well that your teachers and district staff want the best for your students. We might not always agree on what best looks like, but doing what's best is truly what's in our hearts. I also want to thank the school board and our superintendent, Dr. Gearing. Thank you for creating a school district that I am proud to work for and that I know is always watching out for my children.
Thank you. Speaker number five.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Gearing, and Board of Trustees. My name is Becky, and I am all-in with the Leander ISD Fine Arts Department. My children both participate in fine arts electives, and while their academic instruction has always been exceptional, the fine arts programs are what shape their school experience as a whole. The true joy of the arts comes from the communities they foster. Everyone comes together as a team to create something from nothing. Everyone plays an important role and relies on one another. Not only do students find camaraderie and develop executive skills through group accountability, they also develop a sense of identity and pride found through expression and personal passion. Because of the size and strength of our district, the fine arts experience is at a professional level. Though often an undervalued discipline, I truly respect and honor the efforts being made to ensure that every student has the opportunity to participate and benefit from this valuable resource. The formative impact all children receive from the fine arts will last a lifetime, and for this reason, I am all-in with LISD.
Thank you. Speaker number seven. Speaker number seven, before we start your time, if you'll press the button, and then when you start speaking, we'll start the time.
Yes. Thank you, board members. Someone before me said you're not paid very well, and I just want to point out, you're not paid at all. So, thank you for volunteering your time to be here for our community. I am all-in for LISD's community schools. I know there are so many families who choose to move to our district, not just because we're known for our rigorous academics, wide-ranging extracurriculars, and comprehensive support programs, but also because our kids benefit from schools that are the foundation of our communities. LISD has done such an amazing job of building schools within our neighborhoods so that pre-K and elementary students can walk or bike with their families and friends from their home to their school. As students get older and move on to their middle schools, their families can relax, knowing that students get to grow up with their peers all throughout elementary, middle, and high school. The relationships that are fostered at our schools are really why they are the center of our communities. Our students, families, and teachers all build lifelong relationships that stem from people they meet and get to know in the LISD schools. Because of the strong support system that our schools create and encourage, people never want to leave our community, and those outside our community want to be a part of it. This creates such a beautiful relationship in which our community gives to our schools and our schools give back to our community. And that's why I am all-in for LISD.
Thank you. Speaker number eight.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Turner, and my children attend schools within Leander ISD. Six months ago, my 19-year-old son, a former Leander student, was found dead. He died from one Percocet pill that was purchased on social media and contained a lethal amount of fentanyl. I come to you tonight to warn you and the community that this is a problem, and the problem is here more than you or anyone may realize or are willing to talk about. Fentanyl is being pushed through our schools, and it's time for parents and schools to act quickly and effectively. Our students are using fentanyl. Our students are addicted to fentanyl, and I'm going to talk about it. Fentanyl is the leading cause of death among 18- to 45-year-olds, more than COVID, more than car accidents, more than suicide. Seven grains of salt is a lethal amount of fentanyl. One pill does kill. Forty percent of these pills are deadly. It's being marketed and sold on social media. Our students can buy fentanyl today easier than they could get a burger at Whataburger. Our students are being poisoned. They simply do not have the maturity nor knowledge or full understanding of the risk associated with using even one time. In Leander ISD, there's no current updated education for students and parents about the real dangers our youth are facing. When students consume fentanyl, they're no longer able to breathe. There's a lifesaving medication called naloxone, and no current staff member is trained or has access to that product. If a student was to consume on campus, they would likely die. I'm asking for school nurses to be educated and provided with this lifesaving medication. So while I think it's important to promote constructive conversations, I also think we need to bring attention to the prevalence of fentanyl and the number of young adults who are dying in our community.
Speaker number nine.
Good evening, board members, district staff, Dr. Gearing. Once again, I kind of fretted over writing my speech for tonight, and I'm now going to just sort of toss it off to the side after sort of hearing some of the other stuff. Madam President, you brought up the issue of staffing, and you know, we all know that Governor Abbott has, wants a task force to address that, and I don't think it's a surprise, really, why teachers are leaving the profession. Ultimately, I will tell you that I intend to stay, but I don't begrudge any teacher who chooses to leave. I am staying because of the support that I have felt working here in Leander ISD. I don't know that that would still be the case if I were in a different district. I am staying because I believe I am supported by my school board. I believe that I am supported by my admin. In the 14 years that I have worked in this district, I have been privileged to work with some of the best admin and some of the best colleagues that I could have hoped for. I am choosing to stay because I think our students need teachers who are willing to stand up and stand by them. Some of our most vulnerable students who are currently under attack through political means, and some of our community members who feel that not all of our students belong. So I want to just thank you for all that you do for us. Thank our district staff, and thank all the great people I've worked with over the years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 10.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for all the efforts you've done. I've recently done the math, and I've been in public education for all the years I could tie on my shoes, and it hasn't been a recent one. And I don't know, seeing the leadership side of it, I don't know how it is done so well. It is a chaotic environment, and then you add adults in the room, and we often bring the conversation down. But that's democracy. Everyone's going to disagree. I've disagreed with some decisions you've made, but I'm all-in for LISD because we have great teachers and we have great leaders, and I'm hopeful for the future. I've only recently realized how important it is to have school boards. These are kind of abstract things I knew existed, but I didn't care about voting for them in, you know, three, four years ago. But now I see how vital they are. And it's so important that our school boards are constructive forces in guiding these large school districts. And I encourage you over the next few months, the next years, I encourage the folks in this room to not get distracted by the voices that promise destruction and division, the voices that read the Constitution as "I, the people," and want to force their view of one paragraph in a book to the whole school district. I encourage you to build things. Build communities, continue building communities that include as many voices as we can fit in there, because that's the spirit of democracy. That's one thing I learned through all of these years in public school. You're not always going to like what you get, but you're around other people who are also in that same situation, and you have to get along. So again, I thank you so much for your leadership now and in the future, sitting in those boring conference rooms, going to all these events. You're trading off with something, so continue to be all-in for LISD.
Thank you. Speaker number 11.
My name is Maggie Moore. I'm here as a proud product of the Texas Public School System, daughter of a career public school teacher, a resident of the Treviso neighborhood, and a mom of two kids who will attend LISD in the coming years. My priorities for our family and the greater community are, one, meeting our kids' basic needs, two, empowering and appreciating our educators, and three, ensuring integrity both in the decisions that this board makes and modeling it as a valuable character trait for our children. The path to ensuring these things, in my opinion, starts with having adequate facilities for learning, which would require the board to call another bond this November. The politicized talking points of banning books, abstinence-only education, and the erasure of diverse identities are a distraction from the true work of ins- are a distraction from the true work of ensuring that our children and educators respectively have classrooms with low enough ratios to learn optimally and the ability to teach to students' specific needs. These incendiary concerns serve only to make a public mockery of this district and are a grave diversion from the integral work of bringing another bond before the community to support our school district in a positive and proactive way. The Treviso community is currently around 50% built out and will house around 3,000 families upon completion. The preschool singing class I lead in our neighborhood is already packed to the gills with preschoolers and their infant siblings, all future elementary school learners. There is absolutely a need for new facilities and the Treviso contingent is organized and fully prepared to support the new bond by mobilizing voters. I appreciate the difficult work you do as trustees of this board and stewards of our children's future and look forward to working together to ensure a bright future for all of LISD.
Thank you. Speaker number 12?
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and Board of Trustees. My name is Michelle and I am all in for LISD's Special Education Services. Having worked in other districts, I see the differences in our services against others. Our students receiving services are experiencing success in school in ways that work best for them. This holds true to all levels of special education services, from ICAP to Minimal Support. Our teams are amazing. Having my own children served by special education, I experience the differences. They experience the differences. I've seen my shy, reserved child bloom and grow. They've transformed from being scared to ask for help to advocating for their needs. With the support of LISD's fed services and our phenomenal educators, IAs and support staff, my child is successfully tackling advanced English in high school. They are involved in extracurriculars. They identify their needs and seek the best path to meet those needs. Most importantly, they can articulate their strengths and use them to achieve success. I'm so proud of their growth and I know that it has been facilitated by LISD's Special Education Services. I would like to also offer a shout-out to all of the humans who have been instrumental in where my children are now. I appreciate you all more than you know. This is why I'm all in for LISD.
Thank you. Speaker number 13?
I'm Mrs. Pogson. We don't allow illegal drugs on campus. Does that mean we're banning drugs? Students can't carry medications on campus. They must be administered under control of the clinic. Does that mean we're banning aspirin? Or are we simply protecting children from harmful practices? Some responsible children may not need that supervision, but your job is to prevent the reckless kids from harming themselves or others. So, you make a blanket school policy and let the parents decide off-campus. The Children's Internet Protection Act requires you adopt and implement an internet safety policy that prevents the access of minors to inappropriate material and take measures restricting access to materials harmful to them. Does that mean you are banning Pornhub? Superintendent Bruce Gearing said the process to choose materials overlooks some explicit materials that should not be in the hands of students. He said there needs to be a balance in including diverse book titles while keeping out explicit sexual content. 16 books were reviewed. 11 were deemed inappropriate for ELA book clubs. Did you ban those books? Or did you simply use your good judgment, own your mistakes and choose academics over sexualizing minors? Research shows teenagers engage in riskier behavior than adults. We don't need this research. We all remember how bulletproof we were where we used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Speaker number 14?
I'd like to clarify some facts regarding the last board meeting since there seems to be some confusion regarding our policy, our public comments based on actual law. Per LISD BED local policy, nothing states a speaker can't identify a trustee by name. Although the board president starts each meeting stating, "Please refrain from calling individuals by name who may not be able to respond as this is not a back-and-forth discussion. This is merely a request. This is not a law." In fact, per LISD's BED legal policy, a board may not prohibit public criticism of the board, including criticism of any act, omission, policy or procedure. You are elected officials, so we, the voters, have every right to use our time to criticize, question and bring to light your actions and words. This is also supported by the Texas Open Meetings Act and the First Amendment. The board president also states to maintain decorum, there should be no outbursts during comments. Based on this, the outburst that broke decorum at the last meeting came directly from Ms. Delacchia for interrupting the speaker and demanding that he be stopped when she didn't like what he was saying. Per BED legal, the board may not discriminate between speakers on the basis of the content of their speech or the message it conveys. Perhaps the board needs to read through your own policies to better understand them. Based on this, the speaker, who maintained a calm demeanor, was within his rights to call out a board member by name and question her support of graphic sex ed material. She wanted the SBOE to approve for use in Texas schools as this would have a direct impact on the children within our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 15?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've last spoken. I've decided enough time has passed and CNS needed to be heard once again. More individuals have left even since then. As you all know, we are extremely short-staffed with even SFE still trying to interview and hire. The middle school cafeteria I work at actually only had three employees on Tuesday and we served over 500 meals for lunch. With only nine weeks left of school, I am scared of what the rest of the school year will bring with staffing issues and what next year will be for CNS employees. CNS has been crying for help. We cannot afford to live where we work. It is just too unaffordable for us to continue the path CNS has been going. And Leander ISD has been offering to CNS employees, begging to be heard, taking turns speaking in front of the board over and over, crying for help. Also, for the volunteers that have been helping, we really appreciate you. Have anyone even stated, started their day prepping, serving or ending during the day in a kitchen since we have last spoken? We are commingled into a department in a paying scale called the auxiliary area. The CNS is the only department in the auxiliary that is profitable but is the least paid. A high school parking attendant, minimum paid, starts $1.17 more than an actual CNS employee. I'm not sure the pay scale justification why CNS is so low through the Leander ISD.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker 15. Speaker number 16?
I'm all in for Leander ISD and our community schools. I walked my child to school until they were too cool to hang with mom, but those walks to school were some of my favorites. Our walks to school were where we discussed the colors of the sky at sunrise. Yes, sunrise. And how to ask appropriately when you want to pet a dog and the street names of our neighborhood. We discussed which homes were safe places in the event of an emergency and how ant bites are painful, but those are not an emergency. We saw ducks hatch and learn to fly as we walked by the pond near school. And to this day, despite our strong belief in science, any flock of any bird is officially duck flight school. Our walks featured kind and cautious drivers as well as rude and dangerous drivers. And these lessons have proved to be helpful cautionary tales as we learn to drive. I'm all in for the memories that I created with my kiddo on these walks. I'm all in for the bonds that they're creating with their own friends as they walk to and from school now. And the decisions of this board have created lasting lessons and fond memories for my family. I want this opportunity for everyone in our community and that's why I'm all in for Leander ISD.
Thank you. Speaker number 17?
Hi. I just wanted to say I'm all in for LISD too. Until recently, my fifth grader, my fifth grade son, he had an undiagnosed hearing problem. With help from the teachers and the Special Education Department at LISD, we were able to get my son the medical care he needed. He is now advancing so much faster with his new hearing aid and the additional support at school. I am incredibly grateful to the wonderful teachers and staff at CC Mason. Without their time, care and compassion, my son would not be catching up as fast as he is. I also want to give a shout-out to the teachers and staff at Leander High. My oldest attends there and he loves the drama program and is participating in Theater Tech. He's learning how to use all the tools, which are helpful at home too. Lastly, I want to thank all of you. Your commitment, your dedication to this community, your time for us and for the students is so appreciated. I hope you really know that. No matter what else goes on here and what other people have to say, you are worthy, you are appreciated and we really, really are grateful for you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 18?
I'm also all in for LISD. My second born is on a 504 special needs plan. I just wanted to express how thankful I am for all the services that public schools offer to my child. A free evaluation was invaluable whereas elsewhere it would have broken my budget. The teacher is leaving no page unturned to get him what he needs and works seamlessly with the counselor and assistant principal to get him the care that he needs. He has been added to a special reading program and is now thriving in school. I have heard very different things from charter schools. In one particular charter school, children on the spectrum were just left in rooms by themselves every time they needed assistance. Public schools are so much better equipped to meet the needs of every child. We need to fund public schools. We need to fix recapture and we need to pay our teachers what they deserve. They are the heart of every school. The banning of books is merely a distraction. Let's not be divided by the efforts of nefarious influences. Let's band together and vote to keep public schools well-funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 19? Speaker number 19? Okay, speaker number 20?
I am all in for student voice in LISD. I love the way that LISD empowers students to shape our district and affect positive change for their peers. I have several students that feel comfortable engaging with district leadership and campus administration regularly to give feedback or express concerns. They know that they can expect a response even from the governance team and they know that their voice matters. I also have several students that watch the board meetings and I appreciate that you are taking steps to make it more conducive for students to take the leap to come and speak in person. You are allowing students to speak first and you have implemented a clear bag policy to increase a feeling of safety. LISD considers student voices and perspectives to be an essential part of critical decisions that affect policy, curriculum and student experience. Students are invited to serve as representatives in district committees to provide insight that is genuinely valued by district leaders. I have had the pleasure to serve with students in the Social Studies CACAC. They bring firsthand knowledge from the classroom experience and ensure that LISD curriculum meets the teaks in a way that is relevant, engaging and equitable. I am constantly impressed when I am in breakout rooms with them and I am thankful to work for a district that values their voice. LISD is also unique in its superintendent student advisory committee, or SISAC, in which student representatives from each high school campus meet regularly with Dr. Gearing. My students that are part of SISAC say that they appreciate the access to top district leaders and their willingness to relate to students on a first-name basis so that they will feel comfortable working as a true team. We have already seen the effects of the SISAC in specific district policy changes. We have so much to learn from our students and I am lucky to be part of a district that honors their agency. This is why I'm all in for LISD.
Thank you. Speaker number 21?
I am grateful for the many teachers who serve our kids by helping them to be educated and preparing them for the next grade level or college level. My great-grandparents both taught. Vivian taught elementary. Frances is an English professor. Their son, John, a math professor. Even my husband taught college courses last year. We're grateful for our speech therapist and our son's teacher who is patient and has an uplifting attitude in his class and our principal's professionalism in communication. When our son asked in a meeting why history wasn't being taught to him, what does a school board do when a teacher is not representing caring professional teachers by their public comments to the board? Comments that are bringing up my son personally and his desire to learn more are comments aimed at moms like me who come to the board and share concerns in our children's education. Maybe an action item can be established because it affects several parents with the same concerns regarding overload of funded grant money steering the course of SEL. But many parents and teachers feel intimidated about these public meetings. On February 24th meeting here at LISD District School Board Meeting, my son's expression for more history, science, math and less emotional breakdown of his personal health was attacked. Where are the boundaries for students to not have to get emotionally involved in a schoolwork when it makes them uncomfortable and want to dream big? Then on top of that, what does a family of your school district do when they are attacked publicly in this room? According to the teacher handbook, all employees are to recognize and respect the rights of students, parents, fellow employees and community members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Speaker number 22?
Hello. I am all in for LISD's curriculum resources. When my husband and I moved to Texas four years ago, I only had a year of teaching experience. My first year was so stressful that I was questioning whether my lifelong dream of teaching was really sustainable for me. At the time, I couldn't pinpoint what would have made my first year better, but after being fortunate enough to be hired in LISD, I realized exactly how I could have been supported. My previous district had almost no curriculum and what we did have were a couple of mini-units that required texts that were not flexible enough to address the needs of all students. However, when I came to LISD, I was exposed to comprehensive curriculum for the first time. It offered guidance on what skills we should cover but without the rigidity of mandatory texts. And our work with that curriculum was supported not only by a professional learning community but also by our amazing expert secondary English curriculum coordinators who helped our PLC to plan instruction, intervention and enrichment to collect authentic data and to enter and analyze that data so that all members of our PLC could best serve all kids. The support of our curriculum coordinators helped me grow into a better teacher. So, when applications for the curriculum team opened up, I jumped at the chance to participate in the process. This is my third year serving on that team and it has truly shaped my ability to plan more thoughtfully and to hone in on the best way to reach my kids. Ultimately, the curriculum supports in LISD are what helped me to discover my way as a teacher and to see that I could find the happiness I always imagined for myself in the field of teaching. And that's why I'm all in for LISD.
Thank you. All right. Speaker number 23?
Hi. I am all in for LISD's gifted and talented program, Quest. I'm a middle school Quest teacher. My husband is an elementary Quest teacher. My son, a current sixth grader, has been in Quest since he came to Leander from Montessori in first grade. So, you could say we are a Quest family. Quest means a lot to many others in the district as well. The state of Texas mandates that each district provide services for gifted students, but it doesn't say what that has to look like. Leander has created a beautiful, robust program that has no equal in other districts comparable to ours. It is a program where high-intellect academics and high-intellect creatives can both excel. It truly is a different view on GT education. We know from research that gifted children often feel like they don't fit in. They realize early on that they may be out of sync with their peers. I see this in a lot of my students and in my own child. We also know from research that feelings of isolation and not belonging can lead to emotional struggles, depression, dropping out of school, possibly even suicide. Where would these kids be without the social connections they make in Quest classrooms across the district? Peer pressure is a heck of a thing and Quest creates a community of understanding and support that pushes each student to meet their challenge level, but also frees them from social constraints that would otherwise keep them from meeting that challenge. It's a place they can truly take chances and risks, going for those wild, weird ideas without being scoffed at. Weird is wonderful in a Quest classroom, and our quirky Questers make the most of it on a daily basis. My son has absolutely thrived through his time in Quest. He's always loved to learn, but the confidence he has developed through his presentation skills, the opportunity to work with other students who think like him, has been paramount to his growth in these formative years. That's why I'm all in for L I S D.
Thank you. Speaker number 24. No speaker 24. Speaker number 25. Speaker number 26. Speaker number 27.
I am all in for L I S D's diversity, equity, and inclusion war. Woo! Since the start of the pandemic, L I S D has made great strides to make every student and family in our community feel more supported and accepted. Many parents and students have spoken at board meetings advocating for policies that protect our most vulnerable students. Those in our special programs, students of color, and LGBTQ plus students, among others. L I S D heard those concerns and formed a group of parents, community members, and educators to hold listening sessions and address the feedback. I'm sorry, I'm so passionate about this. Like, okay, kind of going off script. I felt like I was part of a community that we worked really hard to make this happen. And lots of times, you know, people go, "Well, why are you wasting your time there?" That doesn't get you, you know, nothing ever happens, you know? The government's going to do what it does. But being part of those committees and seeing a group of people push together to get this passed, to get those policies in place, to get our equity officer, like, it was just a feeling of, the work does pay off. You just have to start somewhere, right? So more than anything, that's why I'm all in for this district. I really appreciate all the work you've done and that you're continuing to do. And also, on another note, I wanted to apologize to Dr. Dolakiya for what happened to you last week. That isn't called for. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker number 28.
I've got to push the button. I want to thank the board as well for all that you do and for your unpaid service every single night. You work very long hours, and so thank you very much. I'm all in for the student showcases that you do before the board, at the beginning of the board meetings. Those are really special gifts and pretty much the highlight of my day. So it's something that I look forward to every week to see what the students are doing. So I wanted just to, you know, tell you a little bit about All In L I S D and why we came today. We're in, we understand that, you know, there's a lot of people doing a lot of hard work in L I S D. And to me, you know, Leander I S D is a very magical place. There's a lot of bonds and relationships and learning that goes on here. And so we are all in because we want to do what we can to kind of build up the school. And whether or not that's things like supporting, funding for the school, supporting our public education, we're all in. And so that's why we've kind of came to you today with a positive message to show you that we really care about Leander I S D, and that's why we're all in for L I S D. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker number 29.
I want to thank the board and superintendent for your continued service you provide to our district. It does not go unnoticed in our household. I have some intense thoughts on what we witnessed transpire two weeks ago. My child wanted to come with me as these meetings are for the kids and district staff just as much as the parents. What occurred is something no one should have witnessed, had to witness, let alone a child, which, there was another child in the room. Luckily, my son wanted to leave, and I'm glad we did. But again, there was a child that had to hear these insults. These meetings are for the kids that go to our schools. We are here to better their experience in this district so they can get the education they deserve. The theatrics are becoming flat-out abusive and are prohibiting work from being done. This behavior is driving teachers away and volunteers within the community as well as the kids. These children deserve to be here if they choose to be, but they don't need to be subjected to abuse just as much as the person who is on the receiving end of it. Let us get back to business and focus on our district. Thank you again to all of our district staff for showing up every day for our kids. We appreciate you. And I am also all in for L I S D because I support the district. I support what you guys do every day, every meeting for our kids. I may disagree with some people, but I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker number 30. Speaker number 31.
Thank you to the board, to the superintendent, and especially to the amazing teachers who are here tonight and the many thousands of amazing teachers of Leander I S D. Our debt of gratitude can never be repaid for all the wonderful work you've done. An educated citizenry is the foundation of a good and just society, and any educated citizenry requires public funding of public education in order to pay great teachers like those who are here tonight and those who work for Leander I S D. So I want to thank all of those teachers. And I also want to thank our daughters, because our daughters got me involved in this because they wanted to speak before the board, and they found that there were safety concerns. It took a couple months as we've related to get all that straightened out, and you've made a tremendous amount of progress on that. But what happened last time could happen again. And so I would urge each of you to think about Robert's Rules of Order, meeting decorum. And it's not just you getting attacked, but it's the audience getting attacked, the family members getting attacked, and schools, and the students. Sometimes people are trying to bully them out of the meeting. You had people claim a right to stalk in the last meeting. You had an anonymous teacher colluding with some of the people who spoke to attack students and families. And it's just honestly true that a lot of the board meetings couldn't be streamed according to the Child Internet Protection Act, and that's a bad thing. Let's all be up standard. Let's support teachers, and let's support public education. Thanks so much.
Thank you, speaker. Speaker number 32.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm a proud parent and elementary special education teacher in L I S D. I want to apologize in advance for not being as organized with my comments this evening. I decided to take a different approach. I decided to wait and hear the other citizens' comments and then address any inaccuracies that arose this evening. I wish I had a fact checker that would go underneath comments or snopes that we could pull up there right away, but obviously, we don't have that. There's so many lies and hyperbole that's thrown around by community members, so I wanted to just address a few comments from this evening. A citizen mentioned that we're not banning books, but we are censoring books that are not required reading. Let's focus on that. This is not required reading. The K CAC committee has made recommendations that were followed. Let's move on to more pressing concerns. Instead of beating a dead horse for books that may never be checked out or have only risen in popularity because you're making them taboo. Another citizen mentioned that it was okay to refer to board members by name and verbally attack them and their spouse. This is not decorum, and it's not productive. We will not be able to work together if board members, community, and community members don't feel safe. I was the person that mentioned a citizen's son being bored during S L E, I mean, S E L. I was merely repeating what had been said by the mother at a previous meeting. My comment was intended to show most students may be bored, but there's an overwhelming need for students to have social, emotional learning.
Thank you. All right, speaker number 33.
So when we moved to Leander I S D three years ago, within three weeks, I was sitting in an ARD meeting with the team of educators who were going to help my daughter scale dyslexia. The district we came from was using a curriculum that was 20 years behind what Leander I S D did, and in those three years, she has scaled to reading levels and reads for fun, which is something that somebody asked, "Why would we need comic books in the public school?" Well, she started reading comic books because she could see the pictures and associate the words, the small words that then became bigger paragraphs, that then became novels. So that's why I'm answering the question, "Why do we need comic books in the public school?" Because it engages readers, whether they're reading the same words again and again, repeating the words. Reading is reading, and I support, and I'm all in for Leander I S D because of your special education. But even if without that, I'd be all in because your teachers are awesome. My kid goes to school and likes it. She comes home and talks about her teachers. The initiative that I've been a part of, judging the entrepreneurship program at Danielson, was fantastic. When people come up here and denigrate our district, I find it insulting because I paid money as a tax. Even when my kid's gone as a homeowner and a taxpayer, I would gladly pay taxes to Leander I S D because a smart, educated community benefits me. I don't want dumb kids in our communities thinking Adam and Eve rode on dinosaurs. So that's why I'm all in for L I S D, because you enforce curriculum that is consistent and that services the public. And for that reason, I thank you for your time and for the energy you put into keeping this district in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker 33. Speaker number 34. Nope. 34 isn't here. Okay. So everyone who signed up, I'm looking, John, everyone who signed up, then I have called their number, correct? Okay. Then that concludes our citizen comment portion of the agenda. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve as presented or to sever?
I move the board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Anna, a second from Gloria. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. And these young people are from Danielson Middle School Entrepreneur Program, and this is a picture that was taken. Anna took that picture. Yeah, we did write Twitter today. So they kicked off on Tuesday with their entrepreneurship program, excited to sell their products, as you heard a little earlier, that they created in their entrepreneurship class this year. So we're excited to always share the great work that our students are doing across the district. Quick COVID update, the numbers continue to remain low in our community. This is the Williamson County graph. This is the Travis County graph. And the school district numbers also continue to remain low. I wanted to talk a little bit more about what is transpiring, though, globally. And this is difficult to see, but you should be able to see this in your packet. This is from the New York Times Live Update that is online, and I put a link in this slide for you to go look at that in more detail if you wish to. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about the different variants. We've experienced Delta variant. We've experienced now Omicron variant, and we've experienced the difference between those two things. And seen, you know, that there's a difference in severity of illness, but there's also a difference in contagion. And what was interesting to me as I read this article was that the Omicron variant is actually labeled as a B A 1 and a B A 1.1. There's actually two different Omicron variants that existed already in that. There's now a new variant that they're calling B A 2, which is a spin-off of Omicron, and that already is about 86% of global cases today. They are talking now about several, what they're calling recombinant variants, which are combinations of these variants. So they've got Delta kron, and there's two different ones of those. And then there's also a combination of B A 1 and the new B A 2. And so they've even started naming these, which always makes me a little bit nervous. So like with hurricane season, they really only start to name storms once they get to be significant. So they've named these three recombinant variants already, X D, X E, and X F. I'm not putting this out there to scare anybody, but just to make the point that we do have to still continue to be diligent and vigilant in monitoring what's happening globally. You can see that, if you look at that heat map, the darker the colors are, the more cases they have. And so you can see that Europe and Australia, and then down the Chile coast of South America, those are all areas that are experiencing much higher numbers than most other places in the world. What we've seen generally over time is that the variants tend to travel from east to west across the globe. And so I think we need to continue to watch these carefully. Anecdotally, we're hearing that the new variants will show themselves more explicitly in the United States sometime probably in the summer, but of course, we're not exactly sure about that. At this point, they say that they have no evidence that these recombinant variants are more transmissible or cause more severe outcomes. It's interesting that the World Health Organization says that the surge in Europe that's going on right now is due to how quickly they reduce their protocols. And so, you know, urging people to be a little bit more careful with how quickly they remove protocols, especially in organizations of large numbers of people. And so I just wanted to point out some of those differences that we're starting to see. So what does that mean for us going forward? As you heard earlier, our goal has always been to stay open and to stay safe. That's true for our students and our staff, and we're very cognizant of the fact that out in the community, we don't always know the situations that our students and our staff are coming from. And so how we behave inside the organization has an impact, we know, on homes and houses outside of our control. But that does mean we have to be careful about what happens inside of our organization itself. And so I want to walk you through just quickly what we've learned. We know that students benefit from in-person learning, and that safely returning to in-person instruction continues to be one of our priorities. Vaccination, of course, is the leading public health prevention strategy to control the COVID-19 pandemic as much as possible. Respiratory etiquette, hand washing, and staying home when sick are very important layers of prevention to keep our schools safe. Student, teachers, and staff should stay home when they have any signs of infectious illness and be referred to the healthcare provider for testing and care. And then partnering with our locals and state health departments to monitor community transmission, vaccination coverage, and occurrence of outbreaks is a key factor to help guide decisions on making changes to the level and layers of prevention strategies needed. So what does this mean for us? It means that we'll be moving away from our color-coded stages of green, yellow, or red. The decision to implement prevention strategies, which are not really changing, will be made in collaboration with our local and state health entities and while still following the state of Texas executive orders. We will implement prevention strategies based on current COVID-19 variant at that time, and that's why I pointed out that those are changing on a regular basis, and so we are monitoring those very carefully. We will continue to partner with our local and state health departments for guidance and to monitor community transmission, vaccination coverage, testing, and occurrence of outbreaks. So based on the current conditions right now and the low numbers that you've seen and the numbers that we're reporting, we are recommending our campuses utilize the following protocols. Masks are now optional for staff and students. We're allowing desks to be arranged as needed in our classrooms. Students are moving freely between classrooms and teachers, and we're not cohorting anybody at this point in time. Students and staff are encouraged to practice thorough handwashing, and we're reminding students constantly to wash their hands as often as possible for 20 seconds and to use hand sanitizer when handwashing is not feasible. Visitors and volunteers have been welcomed back on campus. We're, of course, asking them to check in through the app, the Visitor Management System, and the same protocols apply to them about if they're not feeling well. Any individual experiencing symptoms of any virus is encouraged to consider isolating to prevent unintended transmission to others, and we urge them to consider seeking and follow medical guidance from their healthcare providers. If testing is recommended, the individual must stay home while awaiting test results. We have specific protocols if you test positive for COVID-19. Those are slightly different for students and staff. And so for students, we're asking them to isolate for 10 days after the onset of symptoms or the test date, whichever comes first. And then they may return on day 11 if 24 hours have passed since resolution of fever without medication and their other symptoms have improved. For our staff, we're isolating for five days after the onset of symptoms or test date, whichever comes first, and they may return on day six again if those 24 hours have passed since the resolution of their fever without medication. So thank you. So thank you for allowing me to run through those with you. We just want to make sure that we continue to keep to that goal of remaining open and staying safe with our staff and our students. Enrollment numbers continue to trickle slowly up overall, and we're continuing to monitor that very carefully as students enroll in the district. We're also monitoring, of course, carefully those students who are leaving the district and doing everything that we can to find the reasons for that and to encourage them to return if that's at all possible. These are the district-wide attendance numbers. You can see that we're hovering for most days around the 94% mark. You can see a couple of numbers there in the 80s. 3/11, of course, was the Friday before spring break, and so that is traditionally a very low attendance day in the district regardless. So some board members stole my thunder already, so we did have a great visit to New Hope High School. I just want to point out a couple of things here. You can see some of the artwork on the wall. New Hope students redesigned the New Hope High School logo, and so you can see the new phoenix rising out of the New Hope flames. In the center there is a student-designed logo, an incredible work and just fun to watch the students really take ownership and empowerment and pride in their school. And it was really fun to watch this young lady give us the tour of the building, Izzy, yes. And she is interested in broadcast journalism. She will actually be graduating from New Hope High School in the next couple of weeks, and we're hoping that perhaps she will join our SCR staff, perhaps as an intern in the coming weeks, so that she can learn some skills and help us out at the same time as she prepares for her next adventure in life. And then we had a great Central Texas School Board Association meeting last night that President Bodie already gave you some feedback on, but just a shout out to Trish for having the courage to use some of the CI tools that she's learned right here in this boardroom with other trustees from across the state. She did pick the most difficult thing to do, an interrelation diagram, and executed beautifully. And so it did exactly what it was designed to do, which is to point out the fact that sometimes what we think is driving the problem is not actually what's driving the problem. And so we had a lot of oohs and ahs around the room as people started to discover what was really driving some of the issues that we were talking about at the Central Texas School Board Association meeting. So thank you, President Bodie, for being brave, for taking risks, for failing forward, and for learning with us. And then, of course, you already heard about the Tarvin visit that happened earlier this week and the wonderful work that's going on with our trailblazers at our newest elementary school. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members?
So regarding the COVID protocols and the 10 days of absence required for students, that's still coming from the state?
Correct.
Okay.
Dr. Garing, is that DSHS was for our students, and then CDC is where we're getting recommendations for our...
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
I asked this question via email. We have a lot of students, like NHS and NJHS program letters going out, and a lot of our students have had COVID and have missed school. And I was making sure that these students wouldn't have that access removed. I was also wondering if we could possibly look into like the different programs we do around the district. I don't know how to differentiate that, but I'm worried in this difficult year that these students had, and some students have had COVID twice. And I just want to make sure we're not leaving any student behind or preventing any access to a program that would affect their education plan further in the future for them.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate that. We'll continue to look into that, and we'll be getting back to you. Thank you.
And it might be too early, but at some point, it would be helpful for the board to just get maybe an update on the landing page or the link of the protocols, the parents or the changes. If you see we're not doing the color code anymore, when that comes down on the website, where can we direct our community to? Sometimes I notice when we change procedures, we're kind of, we're moving into a next phase that parents will sometimes go back and go, wait, but look, there was this over here, here's this notice over here. And so maybe if we can just have an update, do we have that clarity now, and is there one direction and one page?
I will find out. I think John's out there, so otherwise, I'd invite him to the mic, but Shannon?
We're working on it right now.
They're working on that right now.
That's fine. It helps when our community's like, where is that? So...
I just put a link to the article, everything he said.
She's on it.
Yeah, so that set of talking points that I referenced on the slides is going out to the community tomorrow, but I'm not sure that's exactly what you're asking for.
No, mine is as we move forward, if these stages continue or something needs to happen, you're like, okay, here's how we're doing certain mitigation factors. Is there, are we prepared now to explain to the community, we're not using the color code, here's what's going on? Just clarity on how things have shifted and the reminds, right? Are our parents still going to get the reminds? When would those? Are they fading out? Still, I think there's, we respond differently now than when we did way back in March when we had to close down the district. As we've noticed the different iterations of COVID, our response has needed to match what we were facing and what we had to do as a district. But sometimes with so much information, abundance of information, it might be hard for our community to follow. So since this is another minor tweak or change, just how are we getting this information out to the community?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the text messages, but if you'll just make sure that's covered and whatever we send out, that's great.
We will.
All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, discussion, action experience, student experience, our instructional material selection process update.
Good evening, Dr. Garing and Board of Trustees. I brought the whole crew with me that has been working on this project all year long, the experts, and so they're going to get an opportunity to share with you about the work they've been doing with teachers in our community so far this year. So as a reminder, we've been talking about the instructional material selection process all school year long. So we had a presentation back in September during a school board meeting where we talked a little bit about the drafted instructional material selection manual that was drafted over the summer, and we shared a schedule of adoptions that includes what we're going to bring to you this evening. Then in January, we brought a presentation to you that focused on our adoption timeline, and we specifically addressed opportunities for community feedback in that effort to include, increase opportunities for feedback and participation. And so tonight, we're coming to you with an update on the process and a recommendation for resources to be adopted. And just so that you know, our resources are available out in the foyer if you're interested in taking another look. So again, the purpose of the presentation is to review the instructional material selection process and share the recommendations for the following courses. And as I mentioned, these courses, I'm going to introduce our experts to you so that as we go through the presentation, it'll flow a little bit more smoothly. So for K-12 Health and PE, we have KB de Bord, who is our Assistant Director of Athletics and Whole School Initiatives. For 6th Grade Social Studies, we'll have Kip Harmon, who's our Senior Coordinator for Secondary Social Studies. For AP Environmental Science, we have Anna Whitman, who is our Senior Coordinator for Secondary Science. And then for Marketing, Nutrition and Dietetics, and Kinesiology, we have Mitzi Powell, who is our Coordinator for Career Development, and she has partnered this year with Jamie Everett, who's our Assistant Director for Career Development. But they had a lot of work that had to happen this year. All right, this is a timeline that you have seen before. It's just in this presentation as a reminder for you and for our community. As a reminder, this timeline is aligned with that draft instructional materials manual that we drafted over the summer, and this leadership team right here has been working together across all of the content areas to align the adoption timeline. So the timeline has been consistent for all of our courses, but it's also customized to meet the individual needs of each of the different content areas. So if you think about a course like AP Environmental Science that has just a few teachers in our district that teach that course, and then you think about a course like K-12 Health and PE where we have lots of PE teachers in the district, the timeline is the same, it's the process that may be a little bit different. This board communication timeline you have seen before as well, the only thing that we've done to update it is to add the actual dates so that you can see that we've completed the work on this timeline. So the annual instructional material selection presentation was on September 30th. The progress update was on January 27th. The opportunity for board members to provide feedback on the instructional resources at a board meeting was also on January 27th. And then we're here tonight with a final recommendation and then hopefully approval on these resources, April 7th. Gathering community feedback is something that has been a focus for us all year long. We were strongly committed to increasing those opportunities and the participation in our community. You've seen the slide before, but I just want to highlight a couple of the bullets that I really felt like made a difference for us this year. So the fourth bullet down, collaboration with DEWIC, CACAC, SHAC, SASC, and other district-wide committees. This has been a practice of ours for a long time, but typically, the way that this has happened is it's been the last agenda item, and we invited people to stay if they were interested in providing feedback. What we did this year was we embedded the opportunities at the front part of a meeting. We set aside 30-ish minutes in every meeting, and it was a part of the work that happened in the meeting. Our volunteers were encouraged to continue providing feedback after the meeting, but it ensured that people took time to take a look during the meeting, and they weren't having to use their own personal time to make that happen. The other bullet that I want to highlight is that last bullet about three virtual community listening sessions hosted on February 1st by these content leaders. So this was a new strategy that we tried this year. So on February 1st, we held an early morning Zoom opportunity, a lunchtime Zoom opportunity, and then an after-hours Zoom opportunity so that, and I'm getting a scam likely call as I'm sitting here, so that people could Zoom in and then go into breakout rooms to learn more about the courses that were most interesting to them. So if I am Zooming in and I want to know more about the 6th Grade Social Studies course, I can go into a breakout room with Kip and ask questions very specifically about the courses. So we had some people that came into the Zoom meeting, and they bounced in and out of multiple rooms, where others came in with just a very specific question that they wanted to have answered. Our participation was about five to seven people in each of those three listening sessions, but all of the feedback that we received from the people who were there, we really met the needs of the people who had questions. So I would encourage us to continue with the idea of the community listening sessions and the Zoom meetings. I think the format worked well, and I think for the people that had questions about the courses, it allowed an opportunity for dialogue with our curriculum leaders. So what did the data look like? We had one website that all of our curriculum options were posted, and this year, we had 1,730-page views, which means 1,730 times somebody went to the website. We had 703 unique page views, so 703 unique IP addresses tapped the webpage. So like I was on the webpage multiple times, these people were on the webpage multiple times working with others, but 703 unique individuals went to that webpage. And then we had 73 feedback forms completed. For those of you that have been a part of this process in the past, you know that that's about 73 times the amount of feedback that we've typically received. So heading into the process this year, our budget allocation was $858,898. So I'm going to let each of the content experts speak a little bit about the processes that they went through, the teams that they worked with, the feedback that they received, and then I will show you in the end kind of where we land altogether. So I'm going to turn it over to KB.
All right, thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you all for letting us come in here and talk to you about the work that we've done and what we've come up with. Physical education and health, we were very excited to be a part of the adoption process. We did our research. We tried to do our research and dig back in the history of Texas to see when the last time we were part of a proclamation, and we came up with it. It's been at least 18 years in Texas, so we knew that this was big for us. Dealing with all levels, K through 12 and PE and health, we needed a big committee. So we had actually 21 volunteer PE teachers throughout the district. That's huge for us. As you know, a lot of our PE teachers are coaches at the secondary level. They're coaching, traveling, practicing, they're volunteering their time. So I do want to give a shout out to them and thank them for all of the work that they did. Out of those 21 people, we had nine elementary teachers, eight middle school, three high school, and one representative from adapted PE, so we had a voice on the special education side. After we reviewed the handbook and rubric that we were going to use for our vendors, we sent out a needs assessment, step one, to all of our teachers throughout the district, like where are we at, what is our baseline, and where do we want to go from here? It was overwhelming that they wanted to be brought into the 21st century. They wanted an online accessible digital resource that they could use and utilize in the classroom with their students with more multimedia and videos and music and get kids moving. After that, we did bring in some vendor presentations, again, with our 21 committee members broken out by level, elementary, middle, and high school. We were able to review these presentations and rated them on the rubric that was agreed upon in the handbook. In January, we sent access out for community feedback, and we got some really good input, which I'll touch on in a little bit. We sent access out to campus leaders and to our teachers to get their hands on these materials and really try out some of these lessons and see if they're really practical and applicable in the setting, because at one school, you know, school size, you may have 25 kindergartners, and in another one, it may be 70 or 80. So are the lessons practical across the board to all campuses? They had their hands on that for about a month there. We did our listening sessions, which were great. We had a lot of questions on our process and making sure that we were hearing all of the stakeholders involved in this. In February, we used part of our Professional Learning Day with all of our PE teachers to put them out in breakout sessions and really do a deep dive on these resources and discuss what direction we're wanting to go. We got over 80 responses from our PE teachers on recommendations for these resources as well. We took all of this info back to our main committee of 21 with community feedback, committee feedback from our district committees, our teachers, and we had a full consensus on the following recommendations. So it's been a long and very rewarding process. To run through these, K through 8, while we're talking about two levels, both groups did decide on the same resource, and that is the CATCH program, that's Coordinated Approach to Child Health. It's a global foundation, but it is actually a local business ironically. This is what we currently use in K through 8 right now, so there was some familiarity with that, although right now, we do only have the print version with activity cards and lessons. This would be a digital teacher resource that they could utilize. It is TEAC aligned, PE lessons, activities, games, videos, everything with a focus on the whole child health and wellness. Their focus is on moderate and vigorous physical activity skills and teamwork, the social skill development. On the health side of CATCH, there is the CATCH Health Program that aligns with the TEACs that focus on physical health and activity and healthy eating and nutrition. It does not go into some areas that we actually supplement in partnerships with other departments in the district, such as mental health and wellness, healthy relationships, alcohol, tobacco, and drugs. For topics like that, we do partnership with Counseling Department, nurses, SFST, our Second Step Program. And another example of a health TEAC in the state of Texas is the Human Sexuality and Puberty Curriculum. One of the community feedback concerns was that one of the resources being reviewed actually had lessons on puberty and human sexuality in that, and the concern that it could be confused with what we should be teaching in a classroom, and that was taken back to our committee, and that resource was actually not selected and moved forward with. The CATCH program does not include human sexuality or puberty, and we understand that that decision-making resides with our SHAC committee, which is actually this year reviewing the puberty curriculum. Another feature that stood out with the CATCH curriculum was the Coordination Kit. As you know, the state of Texas requires a coordinated school health program in K through 8. They actually have an online kit that can be used for training and for timelines and planning for your campus CATCH teams, which include your PE teacher, classroom teachers, admin, counselors, nurses, CNS, PTA members, to coordinate your campus health and nutrition and fitness goals. This online portal gives everybody access to be able to hit that training and keep up with where they're at in the process throughout a year. Some of the highlights that kind of set CATCH apart, I think, from some of the other programs, is that it is a single license per campus purchase versus per user. So especially with that coordinated school health piece, once you have a license on a campus, it can be utilized and accessed by everybody on that campus. So your administrators and your teachers that are on that CATCH team can actually access those. We thought about our classroom teachers on the indoor recess days or just maybe getting their kids active, they can actually access some games and activities and movement for their kids in the classroom as well with that license. One thing that CATCH did add this year is, and I know this is K through 12, but they did add pre-K into their PE, and that single license can... did add pre-K into their PE and that single license can actually be accessed or used possibly by a pre-K teacher for some games and ideas and activities to use for their students. Moving to high school, as you know, the state of Texas dropped a health requirement in high school back in 2009, so it's been quite a while. We do still offer health at one campus in Leander and that's New Hope High School. It is not a state graduation requirement. It is an elective only, it's a .5 credit. They utilize the Edgenuity Program, which is self-paced for that campus and it is TEES-aligned. So focusing at the high school level on the PE, we have some good resources to look at. The overwhelming consensus, positive from the community, from the committees, and from our teachers, was to go with the Spark PE program. That program is purchased per user, but they do have digital and print access with big teacher manuals that align directly with that digital resource. It is TEES-aligned, lessons, activities, videos that they can use in their class. The main focus for our high school PE teachers was how do we keep kids moving in high school? You know? It's different for every grade level, but are we teaching that lifelong health and fitness that they're going to carry with them when they move on from high school? So they want us to new ideas and some new activities and new things to bring to the PE classroom in the high school level. This is fitness-based, game-based, on responsible and respectful competition and teamwork at the high school level to get them moving. So to kind of conclude and summarize, also including the adapted PE in the process on this, we wanted to make sure that we met the needs of those students as well and if we could help them with some resources. They did request and we would ask for, that we purchase a license at all levels for our adapted PE team that hits all of our campuses and we're seeing a growth in our PE PALS programs as well so that our adapted PE teachers can work with our classroom teachers and modify and accommodate those Gen Ed lessons to meet the individual needs of their students. So it was a very long and rewarding process, like I said, but we're super excited to hopefully move forward with these resources.
Do you guys want to ask questions after each of the different content areas or do you want to save questions for the end?
Let's go and do it after the content areas, but I think you did excellent. Let's see if there were any questions that remained after that presentation. Board members? Excellent job.
Thank you.
Actually, I had a question.
Oh, never mind. Wait, just a second. Still good job, but.
Thank you.
Yes. So you did mention that for some other areas that you relied on other parts of the.
Health TEES.
Yes. And so I'm just curious and just from my knowledge, where does the drug and alcohol counseling reside?
What was that? I'm sorry.
The drug and alcohol.
So through SFST, our student family support team, yeah, it used to be known as Adapt and they have a curriculum and lessons that they communicate with our PE teachers who communicate with the parents before they do those lessons.
All right. Next.
So sixth grade social studies, I wanted to give you a little context as for the why we're bringing just one grade level and why we're bringing it out of adoption year. Back probably 2014 is the last time we had an adoption for social studies and we came to the board two years before that for sixth grade social studies because they had changed the standards for the sixth grade social studies course and it was no longer a course that covered ancient world civilizations, instead was contemporary world cultures. Big shift. The resources and materials that we had in the classrooms did not support that course. And so we came to the board a couple of years early and requested to go ahead and purchase ahead of time some materials that our teachers could utilize. And that was, and we were able to purchase something. Of course, then that put us a little bit ahead of the other courses for social studies. So that's why we've had, why we're coming back now. We're going to fill one gap year here that's remaining on the current adoption and then there will be two more gap years between our next adoption that will be covered by this purchase. We started very, we followed pretty much the same process as KB, so I'll just say ditto. Really, it was a very similar process because we all used the manual for our guide and we reached out to our teachers. Since it was just one grade level, we first started with the teacher representative from each campus, got some feedback from them about what are you looking for, found some resources. We brought back three different resources that really fit the bill for what they were looking for. The resources have changed a lot in the years since we first purchased for this course and the teachers really knew exactly what they were looking for. We provided a lot of opportunities for them to review materials, not only the physical materials, but also online materials. There were also presentations from the publishers provided over Zoom. We recorded those, saved those, teachers could go back and use those. We also got samples for teachers to be able to use in their classrooms and encouraged the teachers to use various lessons and resources within the materials with students so that we could also get some anecdotal feedback from students about which resources they really enjoyed utilizing. And we were lucky enough even to get some access online for our students to most of the resources as well. So then we started gathering feedback, just as KB mentioned and has already been, has been told through community, but also from our teachers. Each individual teacher had the opportunity to utilizing the rubrics that we agreed upon to give us the feedback. And then eventually they came back with this being the most overwhelming positive choice for the resource, not only from our teachers, but also the student feedback and also our community. I think out of those 73 or so feedback, pieces of feedback we received, a huge chunk of those were for sixth grade social studies and almost probably 80 to 90% of those were very positive about this resource. I want to point out some of the features of the resource just so that you kind of have an idea about it. It is a little bit different in the sense that it is a fully online resource. There is no physical textbook unlike what we maybe have in some of our other courses. So it is a shift a little bit for us and we have addressed that with teachers and talked to them and spent some time with them thinking about what are we going to do? How are we going to address students who may have access issues or maybe can't use a computer because of various reasons? So how are we going to help those students? Almost all the resources outside of say videos or something like an audio file can be printed in a PDF form. So if there is a need for that, there is that opportunity for us to be able to do that and we'll make sure that we can help teachers provide that for students. So we're also looking at other options and other things that we could help students with strategy-wise to access the materials. This also doesn't look like your normal textbook online, which if you've seen any recent textbooks online, it's almost like that PDF or Page Turner type thing. Instead, this is fully interactive and in the middle of a sentence, there may be a highlighted word, you click on it and it might take you to a video or it could have a pop-out with more information about that word or about the event. Below, at the bottom of a reading section, there are also videos, other readings, primary sources that can enhance what's already on the page. One of the things that the students and teachers really liked also was the variety of resources that were provided for lessons. So access to the same information could be a reading, it could be a primary source or secondary source document, it could also be a video. You could gather information from, on the same concept, the same ideas, and the same topic from a variety of different sources. And so the teachers and students really liked the variety. The other, one of the other positive things that the teachers really loved about this product was the model lessons that it provided. And they said it really will enhance what they're doing with their students and provide a lot more interactivity and student ownership, they felt, of the student learning because they're going to have choice in how, where they're getting their information from. So there you can see the features and we were choosing Discovery Education, their new tech book, as it is called.
Board members, any questions?
Thank you. I'm a rookie. A lot of things have changed in the 10 years since we adopted the previous text for AP Environmental. We actually adopted the first edition and way back then was a time when not everyone had a computer and so we didn't find a reason to actually adopt an ebook. So you can imagine that during the pandemic, teachers were kind of scrambling and they were really feeling like they needed some resources. So I would say that I was hearing from them quite a few times in the last two or three years. Not only that, but in 2019, the test for AP Environmental made some pretty substantial changes. So I will say that probably in the last four years, I've been hearing from teachers about needing kind of a more modern book and needing some online digital access. So you can imagine that this is pretty meaningful and exciting work for our committee. They're really excited to get their hands on some new materials. Our committee is made of seven teachers, that all seven of them are the teachers who teach AP Environmental this year. Our meetings were on Zoom. We also communicated during, via email. And since not all teachers were able to attend like textbook presentations synchronously, we also provided recordings so that I could actually achieve 100% feedback from the teachers using the rubrics. I collected feedback on all three of the resources that they were reviewing. We did look at the top three books recommended by the college board and we got not only 100% teacher feedback, but we got some really meaningful, helpful community feedback that included several pieces of feedback from our students. I really want to take a minute to thank you for taking the time. It's kind of juicy and hard to get through that sometimes, so I really appreciate the time people spent to give us some feedback to help us make the best selection for our students. We did select the newest edition of the BFW book. Teachers would prefer that we get a hardbound class set of books because there are still kids in the AP programs that really like to have their hands on a book, but we don't feel like that's necessary for everyone. This book actually comes with an ebook and then sapling online resource that has some of the same sorts of features that KIP described for the AP coursework as well as some really important test prep materials. So what are the features of the book that made this outstanding? These days, most publishers of AP books will do 100% alignment with the course. So that's not really a characteristic that we have to worry about considering, so we look beyond that to the other characteristics. Our committee pervered the BFW book primarily because of its author. The lead author, Dr. Andrew Friedland of Dartmouth College, is the founding chair of the AP Test Development Committee for AP Environmental and he helped write the AP course standards. So we feel like his perspective is really valued. They've really enjoyed this book and feel like it's well organized. So beyond the organization of the book, there are some really exciting, modern, relevant case studies that are integrated into the new book. The challenge is good. And then one of the remarkable features is that they have a lot of math practice problems. The math on this particular exam can be kind of hairy and it's a little bit different than other courses. So happy to have a body of practice that is built into the case studies and into the content of each chapter. Our team is really excited to make online resources part of how we prepare students for this course. Now, a textbook is only one part of a curriculum that the teachers are developing, but we're excited about this and we feel like it's a good choice. Thank you for helping us kind of collect some feedback for that.
Excellent. Board members? Good job. Next.
Okay. So similar to the process that my colleagues have followed, we did the same thing for CTE, but I feel like it's important to provide some context about how a few things are different. So the committee makeup, much like AP Environmental Science, we may only have one teacher on a campus who teaches the CTE course or who teaches in a pathway. So to that extent, the district committee and the campus committee were one in the same. These committees were made up of teachers who are either currently teaching the course that we're presenting, who teach a course in the pathway that precedes the course that we're presenting, or teachers who have background knowledge in the content area for the course that we're bringing onboard. The publishing landscape is also a little different. Unlike Core, we do not have the extent of options in CTE. So sometimes you will see a publisher choose to publish content only in one career cluster and not in others. You may see some who the content is actually published for higher ed, but it meets the need of our upper division courses in CTE. One strategy that we have used in CTE is to look to adopt a primary resource for an entire sequence of courses and then add supplemental resources for the upper level classes for certification, software, work-based learning. So you'll hear that come across as one of our strategies. And then these are courses that come from the State Adoptive Innovative Course Sheet and so all of the recommended texts that we looked at came from this sheet and the final adoptions also. So far, marketing. The committee was made up of teachers who currently teach the marketing course on all of our high school campuses. In the past, marketing and entrepreneurship were part of the same pathway, but with the introduction of new state programs of study, marketing is now its own program of study. And so in the past, we've had advertising, social media, marketing, sort of these specialized courses, but this is the first time we have a general marketing course. So to that extent, when you looked at the recommendations, there really were only two publishers who had TEES-aligned texts for this course. The teachers looked at and recommended the McGraw-Hill Essentials of Marketing text and while both texts were very strong, this one they felt like was more engaging, more interactive, had more real-world scenarios. And in addition, a teacher who had used this text in the past, an earlier edition, commented on how it did a great job of helping prepare our DECA students for marketing competitions. So it really supported that out-of-class experience for our students. For kinesiology, kinesiology I and II are part of a new program of study in exercise, science, and wellness in the healthcare, health, health science career cluster. And so we currently only have one campus who is piloting this course, so the committee was made of teachers from each high school campus who have a background in kinesiology. The Innovative Course Sheet recommendations, as we kind of reviewed at a high level, what we found were that some were higher ed texts that could not be sold in the K-12 market because their online platforms were embedded and, you know, didn't meet our privacy laws for K-12. Others simply did not sell in the K-12 market or could only be purchased through a third-party vendor. So we ended up with this McGraw-Hill Structural Kinesiology, Manual of Structural Kinesiology. This is actually a newer edition than the one that was on the recommended list. And as our teachers went through the process, they started with can this one resource meet the need of the entire sequence? We did a TEES alignment and decided, no, we need to expand our search. But to expand our search, because we had exhausted the recommendations on the Innovative Course Sheet, we had to look within the health science career cluster. So this meant things like athletic training, sports training, fitness training. They did find two resources by NGL, Cengage. We evaluated both of them and through a TEES alignment, they decided that both the core concepts in athletic training and fitness, along with the Manual of Structural Kinesiology, the two together met the TEES for both kinesiology I and II. So these teachers are really excited about these resources and bringing these courses on. And finally, nutrition and dietetics. This is also a new program of study, health and wellness. We currently offer the first course in this pathway, Lifetime Nutrition and Wellness. So the committee was made up of teachers who currently teach this course. The initial strategy was, do the resources that we already have for lifetime nutrition and wellness meet the needs and the TEES of the entire sequence? And through an assessment, what they found was the resource we currently have addresses that foundational knowledge for nutrition, but this course really asks students to apply that nutritional knowledge and expand their exposure to career fields. When we looked at the recommended course list, two of the texts were more professional reference, nutritional reference guides that you would use in a clinical diagnostic setting. This resource is a higher ed resource, but the teachers felt like it met the need of this upper division course. It is a junior, senior level course. So we are recommending nutritional counseling and education skills for dietetics and nutrition.
Board members? Excellent job. Jennifer?
Okay. So as mentioned earlier, we started out with a budget of about $859,000 for our six courses and we are bringing to you a proposal tonight for $539,132. You're welcome, Elaine. Look at us saving you guys some money. These are just our initial quotes and of course, we'll continue to partner with the vendors. course, we'll continue to partner with the vendors to make sure that we can get the best deal for each of the resources. And I just want to say how proud I am of the work that this team was able to do together, coming together, partnering with our teachers, thankful for our teachers who are giving up so much time to be a part of this feedback process. But the work is not over yet for this team, because now we have to go back to that draft manual that we wrote over the summer and look at it to see what are the changes and adjustments that we need to make so that we can finalize that manual to use in the future. So.
Board members, any questions?
So when you talk about your budgets, does that include any print, when you have to print some PDFs because some people might need PDFs, or just to get the hard copies for them?
So the quotes that we have here are just for the hard copies and the online copies of the different resources. We do have some line items in TEMA currently for some copy kinds of products. And so if we get to the point where we think, maybe specifically for the sixth grade social studies course, our teachers need additional support and we need to set some money aside, that's something that we could certainly do, especially with the money that we have left over.
And I actually heard that the sixth grade, the Discovery textbook, that it was used in other grades in the past at Leander ISD. Is that correct? Do you know?
I'll talk about that.
And people really liked it, but it's gone?
Yeah, well, the tech book was not what we used. We had an access to what was Discovery Education resource that through Region 13. It provided videos, lessons, lesson plans, and other resources for teachers. And I believe that was dropped because they wanted to use that money to pay for another product for science. But other teachers did use that Discovery Ed product, social studies, science, ELA even, had used that product before. Our sixth grade teachers will have access to that resource in addition to the tech book. But to get that resource for the rest of the district, we would have to go back to Region 13 and purchase that again. And I couldn't tell you what the cost is for that.
All right. Thanks.
I just wanted to say thank y'all so, so much for including the student voice. I think that is a powerful thing that our district is doing. And to be able to have our students who are taking these courses, to be able to have a seat at the table, I think is just, I love it. So thank y'all so much. I know that was extra time. I know it, extra meetings, but I think it just goes to show that we do value the student voice. And I'm just so proud of this whole process. Thanks.
And I misspoke earlier. I should say Dr. Collins. Thank you. Thank you for the information. And yes, for the student voice, parent voice, teacher voice, we've talked before about our LISD family. And I really, it's so exciting to see us really kind of embed that and take that to heart when we're doing things like adopting instructional materials. And we've seen that through the immense amount of response that we got compared to previously. So thank y'all so much. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right, board members. It is 8:23. We are going to take a 10-minute break, recess, and then we'll be back to finish the rest of our agenda.
All right, board members, it is 8:35 and we are back on to our agenda. Item 8B, Governance, Review of the Texas Association of School Board Initiated Localized Policy Update 118.
Okay, thank you, board members. I'll be brief this evening. I think you'll see in this there, this is the 118 update that your policy committee actually looked at. It was almost two months ago now, I believe. Tonight is just a first review. This is just a chance for you to give me some feedback and to answer some questions. We're not in a huge rush on this one as well because, as you may recall, we'll be starting on April 4th through 6th. Staff will be sitting through a comprehensive policy review with our TASB policy consultant. As well as on the 12th, then we have time with the board to do some additional policy review. And so we're going to have some time to really dive into this stuff. Overall, just as general statement, you'll see that the majority of the changes that TASB has proposed in here, there are no staff suggested changes to their policy package there. With the exception of FEC local, TASB had multiple changes in FEC local, which deals with credit, attendance and credit. And we had, as staff at least, and also the policy committee, multiple questions about that and how that works and making sure that it not only comports with statute, but that it's also in the best interest of our students. And so we're asking to sever that at this point because we need to do additional study on that particular policy. There are just, there are multiple changes and it was confusing to us. And if it's confusing to us, I don't want you to have to take action on something that we can't even adequately explain. Other than that, what you'll note then in all the remaining policies in there, that those are all either, in one instance, there's just a policy change that is related to aligning with the current updates to the FASRIG, the financial accounting standards, blah, blah. I can't remember the acronym off the top of my head. The rest of it is statutory changes where we had to make some changes in there. So given that brief introduction, I just want to see if you have any questions at this point based on the materials that you have available to you so that I can take those back and make sure that we can review those. If I can't answer them tonight, I'll try, but keep in mind too that we'll also have an opportunity in policy review to give these a deeper dive if we need to.
All right, board members, any questions?
Sean, we had discussed, I'm just going to narrow it down to two because we had discussed quite a few. One was Shack. There's a lot of language in different parts on Shack. And we, after our discussions, the, some of the things we're going to look for is when we change legal, because there's some legal language that needed to be changed, what do we need to do to local? That will not be in this, so that'll be in our next discussions later on. And the other thing we discussed, and again, I'm just going to pick out two. The other one was the principal. There's a change which no longer requires a principal in our policy to have three years of classroom experience. And have you had any feedback on that recommended change?
That change is merely to give you flexibility. It used to be under the SBC rules for certification that you had to have three years' classroom experience in order to get a principal administrative license. That rule changed, and so that's no longer a requirement in your policy. It doesn't mean that you might not still have that in a job description if you feel that that's appropriate for a given position. But it does give you flexibility if you have someone that comes along that has less than three years, whatever that is, that you really think is an outstanding candidate. It would give you the flexibility to consider that person as a viable option for hire.
I would like to dig deeper later with you in regards to EHBC local for the special programs, compensatory accelerated services. I've got quite a few questions, but I can do that offline.
Sure. And just as a preview, the bulk of those changes had to do with specifically compensatory aid related to COVID and with House Bill 4545.
All right. All right, Sean. So to sum up, we're going to, this is going to be up for approval at our next meeting. FEC, you're going to ask us to sever that, to not approve that. The items that we do approve though, this is not the comprehensive one. We know there's going to be other work. Board members, if you have any questions though between now and then, please reach out to Sean.
Yes. And the only thing I will say, it may be on the next agenda, but we may, after we complete work on those fourth, fifth and sixth, we might decide, hey, wait a minute, let's take a little pause on that while we investigate those further. So I'm just putting that on your radar now that because of our notice and posting requirements, we may have that on the agenda, but we may ask you to postpone that based on what comes out of that work on the fourth through the sixth.
All right. And thank you, our policy committee too, board working through that. That's a lot of material to churn through. So we appreciate all the work. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, that concludes that agenda item. We'll move on to 8C Operations. And we'll take up the first item, which is Consider Approval of All Matters, Incident Related to the Providing for the Defeasance and Redemption of Certain Outstanding Obligations of the District, Including the Adoption of a Resolution Pertaining Therto.
Good evening. We discussed this item last meeting. I have Blake Roberts with PFM here with us again this evening. We are asking the board to approve the use of 39 million of excess tax collections on the debt service side to use towards the defeasance of existing bonds, specifically the 2014 D. At this point, I will turn it over to Blake for further description. And we're doing this rather than a refunding because these bonds are not currently callable.
Thanks, Elaine. Good evening, board. Superintendent Gearing, thank you for having me. Blake Roberts, PFM, the district's financial advisor. We did tee this up two weeks ago. I'll walk through and remind the board what we discussed and talk about the action before you. So what you are asking, being requested to consider this evening is a defeasance of bonds or a deposit of cash into an escrow account that eliminates a significant amount of debt from the district's books. The 39 million is part of the district's INS fund budget for this fiscal year. So it's tax revenue that has been collected and will be used for the purpose and only the purpose of paying off debt. INS funds are not fungible with MNO, so we have to use it for debt service savings. As Elaine mentioned, this is part of the district's ongoing strategy of reducing debt service. And specifically with this defeasance, paying off higher cost compounding interest bonds or capital appreciation bonds. So the strategy with this is we have selected a portion of the 2014 D bonds that are capital appreciation bonds. They're your earliest possible callable cabs, and we are defeating the longest maturity to make this as most efficient as possible and generate the most debt service savings. The reason we're not pairing this with a refunding, which is how we typically are often done this, is frankly, one, we don't have currently callable debt. Two, a taxable refunding has been executed before. But given the significant increase in interest rates over the last six months now, and particularly in the last month, this defeasance is the most efficient way to reduce debt without having to issue new refunding debt. So just some key statistics. As Elaine mentioned, 39 million roughly in contribution today would allow the district to avoid 67 and a half million in future debt service costs. That savings doesn't accrue this year. So for the audience, this isn't budget savings to the district immediately. It is more of a strategic debt service structuring that lays the groundwork for new capacity, but also marches the district along towards the goal of its 25% of cab debt service by 2025. So a really efficient defeasance transaction, professional costs are very low, less than $10,000 for bond counsel, financial advisor, verification agent to deposit that into an escrow account. US Bank is the escrow agent. This all happens pretty quickly. If the action is approved, in the next two weeks, we would take action to affect the defeasance and make the deposit. Those are my remarks. I'm happy to answer questions.
And this is up for a vote this evening, right?
Yes. So you have a resolution before you that was drafted by the district's bond counsel that identifies the particular bond maturities to be defeased. And so by doing that, that allows us to then move forward with this.
Just one clarifying question for me as I looked at the details. It looks like the funds are all being escrowed now or would be escrowed effective immediately. And then the transaction, the concluding transaction for those escrow funds, is that for the August 2024 timeframe or what's the timeline there?
That's exactly right. So because the bonds are not currently callable and you don't have currently callable debt that consists of cabs, the redemption date, the early date that those bonds can be completely paid off is 2024. So when the deposit is made, let's say April 12th, that cash that is an escrow will be deposited to also earn interest. And frankly, you are now in a better spot with increased interest rates because the cash in the escrow will earn more than you were even a month ago. So that helps with the efficiency. That cash sits in the escrow account and pays the principal or pays the interest and principal due until the 2024 escrow date. And in this case, because their cab is not paying off anything, it's just redeeming the bonds on the August 15th, 2024 redemption date.
Question, and I don't know if this, you might be able to answer this or maybe Elaine. When we talk about that board goal of the, you know, 25% of cab debt service by 2025, once this happens, do you have an idea of where we will be on that percentage?
I do, yeah. You're at roughly 34% now. This gets you to 32% roughly. And again, you know, we are, the way you get there is going to be a combination of additional refundings. You have significant callable debt between now and 2025 that consists of cabs. To the extent that there is additional budgeted INS money between now and 2025, we would use that for defeasances and refundings. And then the third piece is really the addition of current interest bond new money. So you have 2017 and 2021 authorization that would be issued as 100% current interest debt. As you layer that in, naturally, the debt service pie gets a little bigger, but the composition of SEBS versus cabs shifts.
All right, I need a motion if there are no more questions.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt their resolution providing for the defeasance and redemption of certain currently outstanding district obligations.
Second.
I have a motion from Gloria, second from Erin. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to our next agenda item now. It's going to be a little bit out of order. I'm going to item four, Consider Approval of Amendments to the 2022-2023 Budget Assumptions and Parameter.
All right, thank you for keeping me in order. Just as a reminder, last December is when we first introduced the assumptions for building the 2223 budget to the board, and then the board approved those in January. And I'll just remind you that the purpose of adopting the assumption is to make sure the administration and the Board of Trustees are on the same page from the beginning of the budget process. And so if you'll recall, when we use these assumptions to build the budget for the next fiscal year and the two years after that, we have some pretty significant deficits. And so for 2223, we are looking at a $35.7 million deficit. So for the last couple of months, we've been talking about how to address that through enhancing revenues and decreasing expenditures. And so in order for us to move forward with the budget, we need to know what level of expenditures we're looking at reducing. And so we're asking you to amend the assumptions to provide for additional pennies on the MNO side of the tax rate so that we have more revenues. That would lead us to needing to cut $7 million of expenditures to get within our budget parameter for 2223. And then I'll remind you that we would continue to cut expenditures with those five pennies in the next two years to reduce those future deficits. So what we're asking for the board this evening is to amend these assumptions so that we can bring you next meeting what that $7 million in cuts would look like. Besides the additional pennies, we made one other small change, reducing the major maintenance from $6 million to $5 million based on the funding plan that was approved, based on the 10-year maintenance plan. So I'll entertain any questions that you have.
So Elaine, this is the continuation of our discussions at our last meeting?
Yes.
And this is not all of the information, like all of the next steps? This is just phase one, I guess is the way to say it, before we can continue the next conversations? Is that a good way to look at it?
Yes.
You're not done yet.
Oh, no, I'm not. I just don't need that.
All right, board members, are there no questions or do we have questions?
I do have questions. So this is regarding those five pennies, I think, you know, I understand that. I'm wondering, are five pennies all we could do? Could we, when we talk about that deficit, can, I mean, there's additional pennies there?
Right. So remember, state law require or allows for three additional golden pennies. We have five, so we have a total of eight there, and nine copper pennies. We don't have any copper pennies, so we have five of our golden and we can get three more. Those three golden aren't subject to recapture and depending on our values can earn state aid. So we're asking for those three golden and two of the copper with the five. We would then have those other seven copper that are available at any time the board wanted to access those. If you did a separate TRE in the future or you looked at taking all of those now. And so those aren't the only, the five aren't the only. That's what we're bringing you as a recommendation for this evening.
I guess, I know we're going to continue the conversation. I think as we continue the conversation and looking at these budget assumptions and, you know, looking at some of the other numbers that you shared, I would like to look at what it would look like if we increased the number of pennies. I also, I appreciate that we've been really successful in paying down that bond, you know, that deficit, you know, paying down the debt. I think that we've done a really good job on that and we've been successful in that. I think right now, at this moment in time, when we're looking at everything that's happening in our society, when we're looking at inflation, when we're looking at educator pay, when we're looking at our support services, you know, salaries and looking at that minimum base pay, I'm wondering what increasing pennies and maybe not not paying down that, continuing that kind of aggressive repayment rate, but rather a prudent rate and taking care of our current operations. And when I say current operations, I'm thinking like current employees. If we did something like that, could we give more than 2%? Could we give, could we increase like our minimum base pay and take care of our, I mean, inflation rate? You know, the cost of living, people's rents are going up in their apartments, 5% around here, and we're giving a 2%. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could look at, I feel like we've been really successful in paying down that bond debt. And I know that that was our goal and I feel like we're on track for that. But rather than continuing to pay down at that aggressive rate, is there a way that we could be more prudent, make sure we're still, you know, making our payment? But rather than do that, take care of our people right now?
Yes, there's a lot in that statement. So I'm happy to bring you what that looks like. I'll just remind the board that the way we got to the five cents was looking at INS and what do we need to service existing debt and trying to keep capacity for up to 1.2 billion of new authorization. That 1.2 is just a what if. There's obviously not been a bond package decided upon. So if we kept that capacity in the INS with the rising values and no future debt, that excess, those excess collections are going to continue to accrue. And so you would continue to have pretty substantial amounts available for defeasance. So depending on what a future bond looks like would determine how many pennies you need in INS. And so I'm happy to bring you other scenarios with those pennies. And then you said something about the progress that we've made on the debt. And I'll remind the board, last June, I believe it was June, PFM prepared a white paper that showed the great changes that the board and the district has accomplished on the debt. And so today, we are nowhere near where we were when that project started in 14 or 15. And so that's a good read just to go back and remind yourself.
Since I wasn't able to participate in the discussion last time, just a couple of thoughts. I think the golden pennies are easy to support from my point of view, right? The power, the leverage of those golden pennies makes that an easy choice. Still going to be complicated to deliver on that because of the election requirements and all of that process, right? So no guarantees there, but I think easy to justify. For me, the copper pennies get trickier because of the relative efficiency of those pennies from a tax perspective in terms of what our community has to give and what we get in return for that levy on our community. And so for me, there's a big balancing act that I feel like I have to do on behalf of our community in terms of assessing those copper pennies and understanding what the real net return is for us and recognizing that that's not fixed, that that's likely to change over time as our AV grows and so on, right? So just trying to understand how we step into those copper pennies if we do in a way that makes sense for our community. To Gloria's concerns about the macro environment, those are all real. Our copper pennies aren't going to solve those problems. We're going to have to have help at the state level to solve those problems. The copper pennies are going to nibble around the edges of those problems, not really solve the heart of those problems in my opinion. And so for me, I think it's difficult for me to express support for a particular number of copper pennies until I understand what the trade-offs are. In particular, based on the presentation from last time, we're talking about a difference in potential cuts between just golden pennies and the three golden pennies and the five total pennies with the two copper pennies, a difference in cuts of about $2.5 million. But I don't know, I don't know practically what that means on the ground. So I'm trying to balance those things and understand the consequences of those decisions. So it makes it hard for me to say in the moment, yes, I support this or no, I don't support that if I don't know exactly what I'm giving up or what I'm losing in making that commitment. So I guess, all of that to say, it would be helpful to me if we stayed a little bit nimble still around the copper pennies to try and work through some of those details.
I, I agree with Gloria. I personally, I know we're in a weird situation and yes, the state needs to step up. But how long have we been waiting for the state to step up? I mean, it's, we are where we're at. To me, I feel like, I personally am not going to get behind cutting any position that directly affects our students. I'm sorry. I feel like we've got to do whatever we got to do. I'd love to see what that option looks like, Elaine, in regards to the copper pennies. I know it's not ideal. However, this year, the last two years have not been ideal. And I think we've got to do whatever we need to do to get through this year. And, you know, maybe the state does come through. Maybe they will fix attendance and enrollment and how we fund education. But until then, my main concern right now is trying to get our staff and our students and our teachers through this year and figuring out how we keep one L A S D the way it is. And so I want you to explore whatever you need to do, work your magic. I call it Elaine magic. I just, I know, I know you're in a hard situation and I know it's all up in the air as far as pennies and whatnot, but I'd love to see what Gloria suggested because I think that, I think there's options. I think there's options before we start cutting staff. That's just my opinion. So work your magic.
I'm working as hard as I can.
So I just want to, I think we're in a very delicate situation and it's not picking staff over paying debt or, you know, it's not that cut and dry. And I think we have a really delicate situation here because I think there's some very real consequence with, if this does not pass. And so Elaine- And so Elaine, if you want to walk us through that a little bit more, just so we know, like if we say, tonight, we're going to do the five pennies, but if this fails, what's the consequence and where does that put us?
So is that a question? So the consequence, if it fails, is that we suddenly, if we get the five pennies, that's $19 million, right? If it fails, then I don't have that $19 million in revenue, so that deficit is coming out of fund balance. And that means moving into '23, '24, we are making some drastic reductions. What that looks like, absolutely zero pay increase, none, not going to happen. We've got 2% in this year, but if I'm trying to cut 30 million out of a budget, I can't do a pay raise. It means no new staff. It means cutting programs. So those are the consequences of it not passing. So what I'm working on is how do we put together a package that is a no-brainer? It's a win-win for the community, it's a win-win for the district, it's a win-win for the board. And so that's where my magic is brewing.
And I like that clarity, right? Because I feel like if you say, okay, we're going to do the five pennies on the voter-approved tax election, you know, we can say, it is still a tax rate rollback. Obviously, your appraisal will go up, and that, you know, has that effect. But we're actually almost cutting your tax rate by almost two pennies. And so, you know, I get, we want to pay our teachers a fair and living wage. I know we need to advocate for the cost of living adjustment at state level, but we can also say, we are also doing, being transparent and saying, but we're going to try to reduce your taxes in our district as well. And so I like that yin and yang of it, and I know it's not where we want to be. We want to give, we've done 7% raises, right? That's like where our heart is, but it's just not, I think, in a place right now where we could get it approved and move forward.
And, but I'd like to see those numbers, because when I talked to Elaine earlier, talking about different pennies, we could still give that tax cut and increase the pennies.
Yeah, I want to see those numbers.
So, but I know for tonight, we're talking about these pennies, but just for future conversation, I would like to see at where is that balance? That, you know, where we are able to give that tax cut? And we are also able to increase, where does, where do we lose that balance? Because I, I think that's what we want to see, right? We want to see both of those things.
Right. And I think in our presentation from two weeks ago, maybe I'm mistaken. I thought there was the seven cent diagram from two weeks.
There was, and that keeps the tax rate exactly where it is today, and it generates 24 million.
So it's not a tax rollback?
It would just keep the rate the same.
The question I have has to do with, you mentioned a 2% across the board. However, there've been discussions about just working on really what the pay should be, the pay scales or the pay rates in the market and for everybody. Isn't that something that really should be done? Or you're trying to use this as input to that? Or isn't that something that really should be done, so we know? Like, are we really looking at 24 million that we need, or are we looking at 19 million that we need?
Yes, and that's part of the comp review plan and the compensation plan that will come to the board next month. And so that work is done, it's being fine-tuned. And so that is being priced to see where it fits in our estimate. So we estimated what a 2% across-the-board raise would look like. And so once HR calculates what the new pay rates need to look like to be competitive in the market, what is that total, how does that total match to what we built in for 2%? And so that work is being done.
And to add to that, I'm not sure if this addresses your question. So in the assumptions, we have the 2% raise. And then under other staffing increases, we have the adjustments due to the pay study. There's another $5 million built into this budget for assumptions to address, I think what you're talking about is the adjustment piece, which is separate from the 2%.
I move that the Board of Trustees amended 2022, '23 budget assumptions in preparing the '22, '23 general fund budget as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Gloria, second from Anna. Any other discussions?
Yeah, I have one quick question, Elaine. Can, if you don't have them now, that's fine, but can you tell me what the enrollment assumptions are for the three years that are in the pro forma?
I have the next year here in front of me. I don't remember what it is for the following two years. I believe it's moderate growth based on the demographers report.
Okay. If you could just confirm those, I think 43, 720 is what I found for the '22, '23 year. Is that what you're showing?
That's for staffing, for funding, it's 43, 215, because for staffing on pre-K, the enrollment's 1,000, but for funding, remember, it's half. So the funding ADA, or funding enrollment is about 500 less than what the staffing enrollment is. And then I'm pretty certain the next two years are the demographers moderate growth, but I can confirm that.
Do you distinguish between staffing and funding for those years?
Yes.
Okay. If I could get those numbers, I would appreciate that.
Elaine, just to clarify before I vote and make sure I've got this right. So this is the administration recommendations. These are budget assumptions that we're going to make. And then if I underlined the right statement in here in our notice, the actual tax rate, any additional pennies, any additional pennies will be determined after we receive the certified property values in July, and we certify in August. So this is, as we said, phase one, to kind of get our discussions in an area where we're fine as we move along.
Remember, right now, we're still looking, we're still working under a lot of assumptions.
Right.
So we're assuming 18% value growth based on conversations we've had with the appraisers since November. If you're watching the news, Alfred Langford with Williamson Central Appraisal District has been talking about the increases that are happening in this area. So when we get the certified estimates in April, they could be different than this 18%. The board will adopt the budget based on those estimated certified values. Then in July, at the end of July, we will receive the certified values, which could be different from April numbers because of ARBs and continued work. To do the VATRE, the board will have to adopt the tax rate by August 22, which is earlier than usually at the end of the month, so it's a bit earlier. That tax rate will be something that we discuss from now and then. So it may not be this 13196. It may be, or 131, yeah, 13196, can't see. So this doesn't, this assumption doesn't lock you into this is what you're going to adopt, because the compression could change again, the values could change, the numbers. And so this is just the starting point. And so the unfortunate thing is, we build a budget still with some estimates of what's really going to generate revenues for the district. That's the timing of it.
All right. Board members, any other questions? Got a lot of work to do here. Thank you so much for bringing us the start of this discussion, phase one, and we'll keep going forward. Lots of good discussion, and I'm assuming lots of good discussion to continue. With that, all those in favor of the assumptions, please raise your hand. Six ayes, all those opposed, one nay, motion carries. We'll move on to our next agenda item. It'll be three, consider approval of award of RFP 2218-L27 Financial Audit Services.
So typically, best practice for school districts is to go out for bid for your external audit services about every five years and rotate those firms. So we issued a bid earlier this year for external audit services, and we received four proposals. One proposal was from Whitley Penn, the audit firm that the district has used for the past five years, and then three other firms. There was a board committee of three members and then three administrators that evaluated the proposals. Based on the proposals that were received, we're recommending that the RFP be awarded to Whitley Penn again. We will ask them to change out their staff so that we do have fresh eyes. But based on the qualifications of the bids received, that is our recommendation. And so we're asking the board to approve this award so that we can get with them. They will submit an engagement letter, and then interim work will probably start in May.
And who was our board committee members on that?
It was Alexis, Anna, and Shadé.
Thank you all so much. More meetings, really appreciate it.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, board members? Okay. I need a motion and second.
I move that the Board of Trustees award RFP 22018-L27 to Whitley Penn to be engaged to provide annual audit services for the 2021, '22 fiscal year.
I second.
I have a motion from Shadé, second from Anna. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, discussion of the 2022, 2023 hazardous routes.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Garing. We have the privilege to follow Elaine after that fun presentation. We're not talking about golden pennies, but we're going to talk about hazardous routes this evening. So I have with me the Director of Transportation, Mr. Myron Wilson, and I'm going to turn it over to him to kind of start you out a little bit, okay?
Good evening, Madam President, Board, and Dr. Garing. So we're going to get started here, starting, provide some background information on the purpose of our presentation on this evening. The purpose of this, oh, you skipped my slide, but the purpose of the presentation to provide the Board, Trustees, the administration recommendations for the approval of hazardous routes for the '22, '23 school year. Here's some background information. After Christmas break, we began this process notifying all the families of our time for our annual evaluation. So we sent that, those notifications out around January 7, provided the community about a month to respond and provide their feedback from January 7 to February 7. And we received about 170 inquiries, feedback from all that community. And we took that information, we reviewed it, evaluated it, and from there began going out evaluating areas between February 7 and March 7.
So if I just add in real quick, we really wanted to be very pointed in making sure we were getting the right kind of data and information back from our community. In the past, we've sent out district-wide, and we've gotten all kinds of responses. I think we had 800 and something responses when we brought it to you last year. And so really worked with SCR. So our timeline is a little bit behind or delayed from where we typically are. And just wanted to give some clarification behind that, because we worked with SCR to really hone in on those individuals and those families that were within that net zone that were affected by these type things, so we can make sure we're getting the right kind of data to bring forth that information.
All right. And for anybody new to the board, we have a hazardous, we have a scoring matrix that was developed by a community advisory committee and approved by the board in 2019. And that's what we use to score the students' walking zones to and from school to determine if it meets the criteria for bus service for those students living within those two miles. And we do that because the state provides funding for public schools to the bus students to and from campuses that are within those two miles. And here in Leander, families living closer to that, within that two miles from that zone are referred to as not eligible for transportation or the net zone. So they all, and they only provided transportation if the route is rated as hazardous. And there are some situations where they would automatically qualify for bus service according to that matrix, and that's when they cross our territorial street, lines along the road with speed limits of more than 45 miles per hour, or crosses a railroad crossing.
So the next couple, so the next couple of slides are information for, and that we got in, the data that we received. And so out of all those 100-plus responses, really narrowed it down and looked at what are the kind of the consistent things. First, wanted to point out, just as we went through with Tarvin Elementary last year, with North Elementary opening up, we've got some net zone folks that are going to be within that. So as we, it has scored below the matrix right now. We also know that there's a lot of construction still happening in that area. So as we're monitoring it, just as we did with Tarvin, and continue to do with Tarvin because of just the construction that's happening within those next phases that are around that school, we want to make sure we still have those clear and safe pathways for our students to get to school that would be within that net zone. So wanted to highlight the north. I'm not going to go and read each one, and if you have a specific one that you would like to look at or talk about, definitely can open it up for discussion on that, or we can kind of go more into details on those things. So several conversations come around Quinlan and in our Steiner area. We know that that is always a concern. Just because we opened this up for 30 days to receive formal feedback, we get feedback throughout the entire year. We get lots and lots of feedback through let's talks and just phone calls and just conversations and everything else that happens. And so we know that this is a heavy area and one that is an area of a lot of concern. So we do take those things, and all of them very serious. The team has actually walked those individual pathways for those students and made sure that those walk zones are safe, because if you look through some of the comments in the Steiner Ranch Elementary area and some, the Canyon Ridge area, we know that those are some big concerns with the apartment complex and just the overall landscape that's out there. But there is ways and pathways to get to those individual schools. So our findings at the end of it all were that we're not recommending any additions or discontinuing any services that we currently offer right now. And so looking at those, there were several that got close, but none of them were any of that factor according to the scoring matrix.
Board members?
I'd like to thank you all for the work that you all do on this. I know you take the comments that are given to you seriously, and as you said, you take them all throughout the year. From me personally, I still have the hardest time whenever we have hazardous routes come up in discussions. We say they're NET, not eligible for transportation unless they're deemed as hazardous. But some of the family members or community or parents out there would say these feel hazardous to me. That's a very sensitive subject. And I have not found any other system in place that I can see in any other district of another way to do it. I think as far as the system is, you all have done a tremendous job. But if I could just encourage you all to keep looking out there and see if there's some other way or another way or efficient way to tackle bus routes, of course. We, sometimes the answer is if we could do more routes, but more routes doesn't answer the question of then do we have enough drivers? And so I understand there's a delicate balance in place. But for this area, I always have so many questions, but it still leads me back to, when I look out there and I see what's going on, you all have an excellent system. Thank you for hearing parents combat, comments. Thank you for following up, sending letters ahead of time. But please keep your eyes open. If there's any other innovative things we can do, bring that to the board.
And then when it comes to the scope, is it getting the students to school, but just around the school is not part of your scope? Trying to determine if there's a bus route, is, that's your scope?
Yes, within the, within the net zone, because we transporting anything outside of the two mile, outside of the two mile.
Yeah, because there are, there are other issues and emails that we receive regarding students that are really close to the school.
Yes.
Yeah, and so, okay.
I do have a question. How do you decide when to bring up one of these situations again? Because I'm thinking of North Elementary, there's some new, there's a bunch of stuff going on San Gabriel plan, like more houses, and how do you, what does that process look like for those parents that do see their community on here? How do you all go back to reevaluate those through the year? Or do they, do you, or do you? Or is it just like parent complaint? What does that look like?
Well, we do monitor throughout the year, like now, we already know with all the, because our buses are out there, we're out there driving around, so we're familiar with some of the new construction. Because even now, even some of those that were on this list, they were not from community feedback. It's because we saw the apartment complex going in on Baghdad Road. We saw Divine Lake being built over there, because we have to pass it every day. So we monitor that ongoing, and we just monitor it ongoing. If we have to make adjustments, we will, we'll do them on the spot. And then this update at this annually when we come before the board.
And the drivers provide that feedback to our routing team. And then that routing team will look at it, pull it up on the maps, and then start making some of those determinations, or drive that route, or walk that individual route if it's within one of those net zones.
It's complicated. Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Is there, this one's up for approval when? Is there, this one's up for approval when?
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting? Will this end up being on consent then? If there's no questions, it's going to end up being on consent, so please. And you know what, I'm going to end up calling anyone asking you all the questions. I'm just saying, because you know what happened.
That's okay, we'll be happy to answer.
I just had an idea. I don't, I don't know that we do this today, but I wonder if we might, for, particularly for our elementary campuses, I think, inside the net zone, if we might define recommended walking routes, just to help our community understand what we're recommending as the walking route into that campus. I think particularly for elementary and maybe for middle school in some cases, that might be helpful and might also help focus conversation around particular areas of concern.
So that's a great point, and that could be something that's easily done because we have those already outlined for those in, recommended walking paths.
All right, board members, no other questions. Thank you so much. Before I move us into close, don't close down those laptops yet, I'm going to pull up Agenda Item 11, Board Meeting Debrief. And if you will click on that in your packet, it is a one-way communication. There's a link there. It's a one-way communication. Did I pull it up and is it? I tested it before we got here. Is it dated 3/10? Okay, let's try it again. Okay, if you click on the link, it should pop up now. Thank you, Mitchy, that was fast work. Board Meeting Debrief at the top, it says 3/24. And if you just want to type in your answers, there's three brief questions there. What's one thing we did in the meeting that we should continue to do? What is one thing we didn't do enough of in the meeting that you want to do more often in the future? And what is one thing that we can do to be more effective? For the second one, if you do anything like karaoke or dance, well, that's just all on you. Stand up. All right, these questions are one-way, they'll go to administration, and then they'll bring them back, most likely at our team of eight, but we'll see what kind of comments we get and if we need to adjust. Quicker than that, we certainly will. Counting, yeah, okay. So it is now 9:23, and we will be moving into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and our attorney-client privileged matter. Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties of public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. There will be no action. Take it in closed session, we will come back out to open for any actions. Do you have any motions for closed?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for teacher employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale, policies, and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2021-22 school year.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion from Rashad A., second from Anna. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries.
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for teacher employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale, policies, and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2022-23 school year.
I second.
A motion from Rashad A., second from Anna. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Board members, as you leave, don't forget to hot dot. That completes our agenda for this evening. It is 9:41, and we are adjourned.